All right, welcome to August 31st. This is a special meeting of the Lake County Board of Supervisors. We are going to open up our meeting with a moment of silence, which I believe Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor Scott have won. So, please.
I would like to dedicate this moment of silence to the 11 Marines, one Sailor, and one Soldier that we lost in Afghanistan this last week.
I would like to offer a moment of silence to the Williams family. They lost a newborn within a 30-day period, and, you know, we don't know why these things happen, but we'd like to send our love and our thoughts to the family, the Williams family.
Supervisor Pyska, would you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that. Checking in with all Board of Supervisors and staff, are there any extra items to be added to the agenda today? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and move forward. We have some items on the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone wishes to pull? And seeing none, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any items from the consent agenda that anyone wishes to pull? And let me open up my participant list on Zoom. Again, if you're on Zoom, please press the button at the bottom of your screen for raising your hand. If you're calling via telephone, dial *9. And again, if you wish to pull an item from the consent agenda, please go ahead and raise your hand. And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Consent Agenda 5.1 through 5.7.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second from Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please. Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sibotian.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We don't find ourselves in this position. We're ahead of time too often. Let's go ahead and start with Supervisor Calenders, and let's start with Supervisor Simon.
Finishing up the board meeting today, I have on Thursday, I have on my calendar, South Deal Committee meeting, Friday, the Drought EOC, obviously the holiday weekend this weekend. Next week, I have on Wednesday, the Lake Church LTA APC. I think there is a meeting this evening. I just saw an email or something. Bernie, we have a 5:00 p.m. meeting this evening. Saw something from Carol.
Yes, with Senator McGuire and the rest of the folks for the fire.
Cash fire, yeah, so that just came up too, so. And then...
I should add that. The Supervisors, I assumed, I forwarded that to you, assuming you'd want to be present for the last week.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you very much. Coming up, and then moving right into the next weekend, and a meeting with Carol on the 13th, and the, obviously, Tuesday, 14th meeting.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Crandall?
The day you picked me, I'm not ready. Okay, so we got tomorrow, I have the TID, Earth, CSA2. Thursday, I have Solid Waste Task Force, that was last week, I moved to this week. Let's see, and then South Deal meeting, it looks like we have at, well, it looks like I have a conflicting. Yeah, it's kind of, it's conflicting, so I'll have to figure that one out. South Deal and the Solid Waste Task Force, so we'll figure something out on that. And then Friday, I know I have... Nope, no, I don't have anything. Friday, it's open, and then, of course, the, let's see, we got Labor Day next week. Clean Water Program Management Council meeting on Thursday, the 9th, and then Monday, 13th, Middle Creek Restoration, and then back here for a meeting with Carol, and a meeting on the 14th.
All right, thank you very much. And Supervisor Scott?
Well, today, we're going to be getting our items to the fair, so make sure if you've entered Items to the Fair, you get them in today, baked goods, and I believe produce from 2 to 7. And then tomorrow, I have a 9 o'clock Systems Cohort meeting at 9, and a 10 o'clock Focus Group, aligning systems. On the 2nd, I have an ACT meeting, looking at documents before we move forward with that, at 11 o'clock. Continuum of Care at 3 o'clock, that will be via Zoom on the 2nd, and then the fair opens that night. Then on the 8th, I have First Five, we're looking for our new Executive Director, so we'll be looking at our transition team at 8 o'clock in the morning, that morning. At 9 o'clock, I have a mental health facility conversation via Zoom, and then at 1 o'clock, I have another ACT meeting. On the 9th, at 9 o'clock, a Zoom maternal health meeting. Then SafeRx, 10:30 on the 13th, via Zoom, and then back here on the 14th.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska?
Well, I have two things to report. South Lake Fire Protection District this weekend had a giveaway. It was called Operation Force Multiplier, and they gave away tools, like McClouds, to stop fires, and water, fire extinguishers. They have a backorder list, because so many people were interested, and this is funded through a lot of different grants. After the fire rebuild, North Bay was one of them, just a whole slew of supporters for this program. But the most important thing that happened was somebody picked up their equipment, was trained how to use it, which is what they, part of the presentation on Saturday, was driving home, came across a vehicle fire, and put it out, helped put it out. So already, it's been a success. So the whole idea of this is to have these tools in the hands of all of our residents, and law enforcement, and first responders, so that's why it's called Operation Force Multiplier. So it's already been a success. So big thanks to Chief Wink for writing those grants and putting that program together. We also had a vaccination clinic at the Kelseyville Apartments on Thursday. We were there for four hours, and there was a resource fair with First Five, and lots of our other support groups, and we were able to vaccinate 38 people that day. So it's really great, they're going to be set up again in a couple weeks to do the follow-up appointments, and that was through our partners with Sutter. And Dr. Pace was able to come that day, and it was just a really wonderful event. So we're working through that, we're army crawling, getting more and more people vaccinated, and this was a population that really needed some attention, and so I really want to thank everybody that came out and supported, or put together that event to support that group. So today, after our board meeting, I'm also going to be dropping my items off at the fair. Tomorrow morning, TID, and a few, there's the Cobb Alert check-in in the afternoon, it's fire season, so everybody has to stay vigilant and practice, practice, practice. Thursday, I have some doctor's appointments. Friday...
I'll take care of yourself.
Thank you. Friday morning is our comprehensive drought planning meeting, and a meeting with Brian Fisher in the afternoon to talk about TID issues. Saturday, the fair auction, I will be there. It starts at noon. Sunday is the Fiddler's GM. I hope everyone can go out and do that if they're not at the fair. Monday's Labor Day, I hope everybody gets a great break. Tuesday, I don't have anything scheduled yet. Medical Advisory Meeting is on Wednesday, the 8th. Thursday, Fire Safety Council, and the geothermal meeting are both at the same time, so we'll have to work that one out. Friday, the 10th, is open, and then coming back on the 13th to meet with Carol.
Thank you very much. Just from my past meetings that I had, did meet with Supervisor Pyska and the rest of staff that's on the team, to meet with our investor contractors, investing, the management of our investments, and very hopeful that we are aiming in the right direction, where we're going to get some very positive outcomes. So looking forward to continuing those conversations, and it looks like that conversation will continue possibly on September 10th. Let's see, tomorrow, things are fairly light right now on my calendar, when it's a split end of the month like this, so meeting with Senator McGuire about cash fire, still crossing my fingers, toes, and whatever else I can possibly cross that we can get on the state emergency and federal emergency list. I know that many of those conversations are occurring at the state level, and there's a lot of support throughout the community and surrounding agencies trying to make that happen, so very hopeful on that. On Thursday, I have a CSAC board meeting, so that should take up the majority of my Monday and part of my afternoon. Have a CSAC call later on, and then at 6:00 p.m., a Clear Lake City Council meeting. Friday's pretty much everything about the drought, starting off with the Drought EOC, and then looking forward to that conversation about the comprehensive drought plan. We need to have something that we can pull out of the shelf that's all prepared, ready to go, so that when we do declare drought emergency, there's ready-to-go actions. So looking forward to that type of conversation, and what it is that we're going to be drafting and bringing back to the board. On Monday, the 6th, I have a Middle Creek Committee, let's see, LTA APC the following Wednesday, and it looks like our Clean Water Program got postponed, meeting again with our investor group, and then pegboard on the following Monday. So so far, fairly light, but I'm sure things will fill in in the next couple of weeks. So that's it for me and everybody else, so let's go ahead and continue with our 9:06 a.m. item, which is an update on COVID from our schools. So Lake County Schools COVID-19 update, I'm so sorry, I just skipped public input. 9:05 a.m., public input. Is there any public input on anything that is not on our agenda today? And seeing no hands in Zoom, and nobody here in the boardroom, let's go ahead and close public input, and open up Item 6.2, Lake County Schools COVID-19 Update, and with us, we have Superintendent Brock Falkenberg. Thank you for being here today. Would you like to take a seat? Sure. In front? That way, if people have questions for you, you can remain.
Well, good morning, and thank you very much for your time and the opportunity to share today. I walked into this, and I felt very comfortable, and then I kind of took a look at the agenda, and now I'm really nervous, because you've already gotten through all of your untimed items, and I see I have roughly an hour to fill. So I hope I'm entertaining enough.
We have a long expectation.
So I'm just going to jump in, if that's okay?
Please.
Since March 16th of 2020, the superintendents of Lake County's six school districts and LCOE, as well as our leadership members, have been meeting weekly to support each other through this COVID-19 pandemic. Should say at least weekly. Dr. Pace, Carolyn Holliday, and Denise Pomeroy have joined us for almost every one of those meetings, at least one of them has joined us for almost every one of those meetings. And I just want to make sure I recognize them and thank them for their leadership and their guidance as schools have navigated through this whole process. I also want to make sure I recognize Rob Young. Rob is the Lake County Office of Education Emergency Services Coordinator, amongst many other hats that he wears, and it is a position that I established five years ago, specifically to have someone that can focus on emergency crisis at those times when we need that focus, and we need that liaison between the schools and the operations center, and in this case, public health, so that we don't have all school districts and staff members reaching out directly to public health. We have a chain that they can work through the County Office of Education, and try to alleviate some of the burden that comes with trying to serve six or seven school districts in a county. One second, I'm sorry, is that...
We're going to take a quick break, I guess.
We're there. All set? Okay.
Just a quick fix.
So we've now reached this point where we are shifting, and I'm going to go back to the 2021 school year real briefly. Upper Lake School District, Lucerne School District, and the Lake County Office of Education offered in-person instruction through the entirety of the last school year. So while the LCOE programs are relatively small, the... I'm smiling at it. While the LCOE programs are relatively small, the other two school districts were able to successfully navigate through COVID in the 2021 school year. All school districts, including those that were open, had distance learning opportunities for any student who could not, or should not, be in a face-to-face setting. Beginning in April of 2021, the other school districts that were not in that face-to-face setting began to open up to a, opened their classrooms back up to students, and had A/B days, or days when students would, only half the students would come in. And again, half the students was half of the students that were ready to return, so those numbers ended up being relatively small in some of our school districts. Our school districts need to be commended for several items, and I probably am going to miss some, but one of those is the fact that from day one of this pandemic, they have been offering meals to all children in Lake County, and continue to do so. Our maintenance teams have taken the time to go through and upgrade and revamp our HVAC systems while students were out of the classrooms. And of course, our teachers and administrators were able to implement distance learning. And my wife is a teacher, she teaches at Mountain Vista in Kelseyville, and while she chose to return to the classroom each day for her instructional period, the distance learning really kind of was a change in dynamic. It opened up our household to all of those kids in her class, as well as their households to her. So in a traditional classroom setting, for example, you know, students need help, and in a traditional school day, we would raise our hands, and student or the teacher could respond. Well, in a distance learning model, text became that way to raise your hand, so texting became open and available 24/7. Now, she limited it, she said, I know, I'm done at 9 o'clock at night, but she was able to support students from 8 a.m. till 9 p.m. every night, and worked diligently in that process. And while I'm singling her out, our teachers all worked diligently to implement a new instructional model, and that is distance learning. And there are things that we need to keep from that, and learn from that, and continue into the future. Now we find ourselves rolling into the 21, 22 school year, and our schools are required to be fully open again. So on August 11th, Lakeport Unified, Upper Lake Unified, and Lucerne Elementary School District celebrated their first day of school, their back-to-school day. On August 16th, Middletown Unified School District, Conocda Unified School District, and the Lake County Office of Education began our school year. And on September 7th, Kelseyville will begin, Kelseyville Unified School District will begin their school year. While all of our school districts will continue to require, or continue to offer independent study model of instruction, meaning that students can remain home, they can remain in the safety of their home through this pandemic, what we are seeing is over 95% of students have chosen to return to classroom-based instructional settings. But again, I do want to reemphasize that children who cannot, or choose not to receive their instruction in a classroom-based setting, have options, they just need to talk to their principal and get enrolled in an independent study program. Independent study is not like it used to be in the past. Elements of distance learning are now required, so there is daily synchronous instruction required within that independent study model, particularly for our younger grade levels, and that is reduced as students get older, and it moves back toward that more of an independent study, self-paced, guided, practice sort of curriculum. It has been a challenge to move to the point where we can safely and transparently and deliberately open our schools, and I do want to make sure I thank our teachers and our classified staff for all of the additional work that they have had to put in, in preparation for opening schools in a COVID-19 year. Some of the things that we have recommended that schools implement include regular and consistent, transparent communication with their community, and their staff, and their parents. We have recommended the inclusion of signage on all of our campuses, and being prepared to modify that signage as the situation changes. So, for example, there is no longer requirement on school campuses to maintain that six-foot of social distancing, so while we are still trying to engage in spacing, that six-foot requirement isn't there, and sometimes our signage may need to change appropriately. We are supporting hand washing, not just like we traditionally have at the preschool level, where every student washes their hand before they start, as they come in each day, before they leave each day, and before each meal or snack each day, and we sing a hand washing song. We are now implementing that in the grade school level, and then we are encouraging our middle school and high school students to regularly engage in hand washing. We're reducing crowd size, so eliminating rallies and eliminating school-wide assemblies. And we are requiring staff and students who feel any illness to stay home. You know, in days past, you know, oftentimes, we would encourage people, we would look up to people who could come into work just a little sick, and make it through the day, push through the day. This year, last year, that, we're not in that same ballpark anymore. We are requiring any student or staff that is feeling any sign of illness to utilize the flexibility to stay home. Face masks or face coverings are required in all of our schools, and that is a requirement of the California Department of Public Health. So anytime vaccinated or unvaccinated individuals are indoors, all of our schools are required to participate in face coverings. We are also recommending that those face coverings be utilized outside, and matter of fact, two of our districts are requiring that face coverings be utilized outdoors as well as indoors. California Department of Public Health has also mandated vaccination or regular testing for all school staff. That includes your district office staff, your onsite staff, county office staff, so basically, everybody that works in that educational setting. Our school nurses are taking up this challenge of how do we weekly test each of the individuals in our schools, our staff members in our schools, who have not yet been vaccinated. LCOE, County Office of Education, has set up a team to go out and support our school districts that do not have school nurses with that testing requirement. So while LCOE also does not technically employ a school nurse, we have some health pathway classes, nursing classes in CNA and medical assisting, and I thank our teachers in those classes who have stepped up, along with some of our MA graduates, our medical assistant graduates, to implement this testing program. And then we are encouraging vaccination for all students 12 and up. And I want to remind everybody that the Pfizer vaccine is now approved for everyone 16 and over. It is still authorized for emergency use for those that are 12 through 16. So in partnership with Public Health, Lake County Office of Education has also utilized our same staff to put together a vaccination team, and we've conducted vaccination clinics in most of the high schools throughout the county, and we are continuing to be available at the request of school districts to engage in outreach to vaccinate our students. Now, while we are targeting students with those vaccination clinics, we are not limiting vaccination to just students. Anyone who shows up there will receive a vaccination. In terms of our facilities, the schools are continuing to sanitize on a daily basis. We continue, was implemented early last year, a fogging schedule, where we have backpack foggers and go through the classrooms utilizing a botanical that's designed to neutralize viruses. The static electricity causes it to be attracted to flat surfaces, it gets, the flat surfaces are all fogged, and that neutralizes the virus that may exist in our classrooms and our office spaces. Plexiglass dividers continue to be utilized for those that wish to utilize them. Many of our schools have implemented access points to enter the campus, so that all students may be screened before coming on, in addition to utilizing technology where parents are having to attest to the wellness of their children before they come to school that I briefly mentioned the HVAC systems, but I think it's worth mentioning that the ventilation upgrades were able to move forward at this point in time, because our school districts made a commitment four years ago, when smoke days started to impact us in Lake County. And by smoke days, I mean days when districts were unable to serve students because of unhealthy air quality. So at that time, we made a commitment as school districts to figure out a way where we can continue to serve children, under the premise that our classrooms can be as safe or safer than students staying at home on a smoke day. Now, that doesn't mean that there would be a lot of outdoor activities, matter of fact, there'd be no outdoor activities, but our classrooms could be as safe. So we began the process of upgrading our HVAC systems to HEPA, or MERV 13 or better at that time, and utilized last year to finish that process. In addition to the HVAC upgrades, all of our school districts have purchased supplemental, standalone HEPA filters that are in each of our classrooms and each of our office spaces, and they're running 24/7. So that ventilation piece is key, as one of the many mitigating factors to support, or to eliminate the spread of COVID in our schools. Again, I would like to thank our teachers and our classified staff for helping to implement this safe and transparent return to school. So that's a little bit about the schools. Let's talk about the students here for a second. So under guidance from California Department of Public Health, we have shifted the way that we are working through COVID cases when we have a positive case. when we have a positive case on campus. Last year, the 2021 school year, we would have shut down the school or shut down the classroom if we had one positive case show up in that classroom. This year, there's been a shift or a change in how we're moving forward. And that shift is that instead of closing the classroom, we're isolating the student who has tested positive or staff member that has tested positive. So if a student tests positive at school or their family reports that they have tested positive, that student is to remain home from school for 10 to 14 days. And during that time, they will be enrolled in the independent study program. And remember, the independent study program for younger grades includes daily synchronous online instruction. For the middle school-aged students, it includes weekly synchronous online instruction. And for high schools, it's much more of the traditional independent study self-paced model. Those students may not return until they have been asymptomatic for at least 24 hours. And a report is generated to Public Health regarding that positive test. We then implement contact tracing, which will bring me to the next question of, so what happens to the students if they are determined to be in close contact through that contact tracing process? And this is where it gets very, very confusing and challenging. We have developed a flow chart, I didn't bring it with me today, that we utilize within our agency and we share with our school districts as a guideline as to how to work with our close contact students. So first of all, if the close con, if the individual in close contact has been vaccinated and they remain asymptomatic, they may return to school and they will be monitored daily for symptoms. If they develop symptoms, they will be isolated and/or we would implement a testing protocol. If the close contacts were both masked, the students would also be isolated for 10 days. But districts have the option of implementing what is referred to by CDPH, California Department of Public Health, of implementing what's called a modified quarantine. Under the modified quarantine, the student may stay in school if they are asymptomatic. They are required to mask at all times, including outdoors. They must undergo twice-weekly testing during the 10-day quarantine period, or what would have been the quarantine period. And they may not participate in any extracurricular activities, including community activities. So not just school extracurricular activities. They would be excluded from all community activities. Now, I'm simplifying a little bit because there is a way to reduce that 10-day notice to seven days of quarantine. But there's quite a few hurdles to jump through to get there and not really prepared to talk about how to reduce that to seven days. Many of our school districts, because they lack the ability to enforce what a parent and a student does in the community, are not utilizing the modified quarantine process. They are taking a much more conservative stance and having students serve, not the word I want to use, having students isolate for that 10-day period. Now, if you are unvaccinated and not wearing a face covering during that close contact, you will be, you will isolate from school on independent study for a 14-day period. And there's no ifs, ands, or buts about that. So there are some struggles that schools are facing as we roll into this new school year. Some were to be anticipated, some are, I think, a little bit of a surprise for us. The first one is that statistically, every day, students will test positive for COVID-19 in this county. And while I'm not a doctor and I'm not the one that is going to, you know, make the call on this, the research that has been presented to me by Department of Public Health and by our local Department of Public Health is that the spread of COVID amongst children is still primarily seen in situations outside of school and that we're not seeing a spread within school. But because we are testing and because we are taking close observations of symptoms, many of them are found in school. Positive cases are identified in school. The concept of students testing positive scares many people. And I think what we need to do is we need to de-escalate the fear of COVID from catastrophic to really truly manageable with appropriate medical support. Because we can manage COVID and we can manage the spread of COVID by putting in place safety protocol and by making sure that we address things quickly and appropriately. The other item, another item we're struggling with is that all of this work, all of this effort takes additional staffing. And we are facing this additional work and trying to increase the staffing at a time when both our teaching staff and our classified staff are experiencing a retirement bubble. Our workforce is a senior workforce and they are retiring at a faster rate than we're able to sometimes fill those positions. So we're struggling to hire both classified and teaching staff at this point in time. We are seeing a growing and oftentimes or sometimes unanticipated growth in enrollment. So while I've been citing for the last seven years, Department of Finance statistics that show Lake County as being either the fastest or second-fastest growing county expressed in terms of student enrollment. When we're struggling to hire, growth is a problem to deal with. Where we see unanticipated growth is because of distance learning. Many families moved to Lake County during this last school year but never took the time to enroll their child locally because they were already engaged in an educational program through the district they were in. And you can do distance learning if you, from a school in San Francisco while living in Lake County, just as easily as you can do distance learning while enrolled in Lake County and living in Lake County. So many families chose to forego the stress of changing schools in mid-year and wait until the beginning of the school year to enroll their child locally. And the other big issue that we are struggling with is broadband infrastructure and the lack of connectivity that our students and families face, both for financial reasons. But the schools are taking care of those financial reasons this year and into the next couple of years. But the schools don't have the ability to address the infrastructure issues and the lack of connectivity in the homes across Lake County and the regions across Lake County. So as I, I think I've said a couple of times now, our independent study programs require synchronous online instructional activities. So we are required to somehow breach that infrastructure gap that exists with broadband. So with that, I will open this to any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for all the information you've provided, not just to us but to the public. I think what happens in our schools is important to all of us. So this has been a great conversation so far. Opening it up for comments or questions from the board supervisor Price Cut.
Thanks for coming here today, Brock. And thanks, you know, we really appreciate your diligence over the last year and a half with this. I, just for clarity, each district has their own set of COVID protocols that are based on the guidance from California Public Health. Is that correct?
So, you know, the governmental structure of school districts is confusing. People envision that there's this hierarchical structure between the district and the county office of education and then the county office of education and the state Department of Education. And that is not the case at all. Each school district has their own governing board. And that governing board is ultimately responsible for the operations, the day-to-day operation, or the, I should say, the operations of the school district. And the superintendent then becomes responsible for the day-to-day operations, functioning under the direction of the board. So yes, each board may develop somewhat different protocol as long as it fits within the, both the local and state Department of Public Health guidance to operate under, yes.
So one of the issues that's come up this week and we've spoken about it is the lack of rapid tests in some of the districts or one of the districts and potentially throughout the state and country. And so if parents are looking for a way to get their children tested, to get them back into school or for any other reason, what's your recommendation on how they obtain a test?
You know, I should have addressed that question. Thank you for bringing that up. Because just as I walked in here, I got confirmation from Rob Young, who is the Emergency Services Coordinator for the County Office of Education. And again, this is a big thank you to Lake County Public Health. They have been able to come up and fill the requests that our school districts have during this shortage of quick tests that exist throughout the state of California. For those of you who may not be aware, the supply chain has been divided in support of schools. Schools can no longer receive direct support through their local public health office for the supply of testing. They must now register directly through a partner program between California Department of Public Health and California Department of Education. And while we were in that transition process, the supply chain of, well, I guess I will say, there was an error in the inventory numbers that existed at the state. And so the state did not reorder all of the supplies that were needed to now implement two chains, logistics chains for COVID testing. So we're experiencing a delay of four to six weeks in terms of COVID tests coming down from the state. And so we are limited to what's on our shelves. And right now, local public health has helped fill that gap. So our schools should be able to test. Rob Young is driving those tests around to all of our school districts today.
Oh, that's excellent. Who is paying for those tests? Are the districts on the line individually for those tests? Or is the, how is that working?
I'll say the districts are not paying for the tests. I believe, and I can't tell you how local public health is paying for them, but I believe that the state has set aside funds to pay for those tests.
For schools?
I know through the school's supply chain, there is also no cost for the school districts.
Okay, great. So one other question about, oh, sure.
Can I, I'm sorry, I just had one more thought on that. That doesn't mean there's no cost to the school district. There's still all of the costs for implementing coordination and procedures that follow, and the follow-up procedures that go along with it. So, but the tests themselves are free.
And so are, is parental consent required for testing on campuses of students?
Parental consent is always required for any testing of any student. So if districts are choosing to utilize that modified quarantine process, they must get parental consent for, before they administer the test of the student. If the student and family choose not to consent to testing, then they would just have to revert to the 10-day of quarantine.
So my last question is about siblings and families. So if we know that there's a positive case in a family, how does that affect different siblings that attend different campuses?
Well, through the contact tracing, we're able to identify if if a student tests positive or is identified as being positive. That contact tracing typically would identify that all the other siblings are, were in at least close contact. They may not be positive. So then we would implement that close contact protocol in terms of isolation and/or modified quarantine.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much for your questions. Any other comments or questions supervisor Simon?
Yeah, just a follow-up on, kind of just, positive tests in the household. Can the whole family get a test or just the student at the school?
At the school site, only the students will receive tests. And staff.
All right, thank you. And then the other question I have is for the athletes that we have in school this year and the modified protocol for the quarantine. I just had a follow-up because the way you understood it is if they go on the modified, they can go back to school, they can attend school, but they can't do any extracurricular activities.
Correct.
And just drawing that line, obviously, because when they come back to school, they're still going to be in the lunchroom, obviously. Right? Able to eat lunch with the other students and those types of things. So just wanted some clarity because that 10-day or 14-day, you know, for some of the student athletes, you know, that could be, you know, cost them, you know, a third of their season or something like that if there's any opportunity. I just bring it up when you just want to understand it a little bit, being a, you know, obviously a coach here in the county and understanding those protocols.
And, you know, I too was a coach, football coach, athletic director, swim coach, lacrosse coach. And, and, you know, this is one of the unfortunate situations around COVID. And the guidance that we're following is the guidance that is put out by the California Department of Public Health. So we in education do not possess the qualifications to really change the guidance that they have put out. So in order to protect the district from liability as well as the administrator from direct civil liability for failure to follow what has the effect of law, which is a public health order, you know, we are recommending that districts follow the guidance that's put out by California Department of Public Health. The struggle becomes the messaging piece of this because the messaging piece of it doesn't make sense to necessarily say, your student's safe enough to come to school. But it's unsafe for them to participate in all of these extracurricular activities. So I can, I can see that crossed messaging or that mixed messaging element to that. And I think that's one of the reasons that some of our districts have chosen to not implement the modified quarantine process and just have every student stay home from school as well as extracurricular activities for that 10-day cycle. The, the, what was I going to say? The piece of this that I think is key is that, you know, as that kid in high school who was motivated to go to math, English, science, and social studies because I knew at the end of the day I was going to get to the weight room and then I was going to get to football practice, this is not the messaging that we want to give. But this is the messaging that we are required to put out there and we are required to implement.
And I want to thank you for answering that, Brock. You know, my question comes from the point of understanding that these are mandates that are coming down from the California Department of Public Health and that our local officials obviously understand. But as we are, just as a board too, there are things that come down that we have questions on and don't quite understand all the time. But, you know, we'll implement and follow those. As you said, with the liability question and others, I just wanted to ask that question. And since it's back on me to, as a and since it's back on me to, as a leader in the community, to reach out to the state level, because I know we had this somewhat issue last year when there were potentially going to be sports, and I think the big controversy was whether or not there would be cheerleaders on the sidelines for the games. And I know that that was eventually changed, just at looking at some of those protocols. So, anyway, I thank you for answering the question. I wanted that clarified also, that that is, you know, not something that a local decision here came down from the state, and we've got to work through that process for our kids and our athletes to keep everybody safe. So, thank you. That was my questions.
Thank you.
I just have a follow-up on this point, is that okay? Is yours a follow-up?
No, go ahead.
So, is there any differentiation with athletes and extracurricular activities if you're vaccinated or not?
Good question, and there is the ability to differentiate how you work with students who are vaccinated in terms of extracurricular activities. They may continue to participate in extracurricular activities if they were in close contact and they were vaccinated, fully vaccinated.
Good question, thank you.
Yeah, good question for that, because actually, that is not the message that Lake port Unified is sending out, and that was part of, my question was messaging. I thank you today for coming out and giving this information to us, but I know for myself as a parent with students at the high school at Lakeport Unified, we need to do a better job at messaging, and I don't know how it is with the rest of the school districts, but this information that you've given today, I only knew some of it because, you know, I had contact with a principal or superintendent, or I contacted a school board member to fully understand what the protocols are, and I think our school districts need to do a better job at their messaging, so we can fully understand what the protocols are as a parent. So, when you're, you get that call from the school that your child had a close contact with a positive case, the school district doesn't ultimately ask you if your child is vaccinated. They're asking, they're waiting for you to tell them, but if you don't know to tell them that your child is vaccinated so they can stay in school, you don't know that information. For myself, my child stayed home from school for a couple days because he had a close contact. I had no idea that the fact that if he was fully vaccinated, he could have continued to stay in school. So, I think we need to do a better job at messaging in our community with our school districts.
I want to make sure I don't overstep my authority. Obviously, the school boards have the ability to make more restrictive requirements than the California Department of Public Health guidance, but the California Department of Public Health guidance does allow for vaccinated individuals to continue in their extracurricular activities.
Thank you, Brock.
Supervisor Grant?
Yes, and of course, after you said that, I think this might be part of my next question, is situations where families decide they don't want to vaccinate, they want their whole family to vaccinate, or vice versa, where the family feels completely unsafe in sending their child to school because of the opposite. Are they given the opportunity to conduct an independent study? And I think you might have answered it, but I just wanted to kind of like highlight.
Yes, every family is given the opportunity to participate in independent study. They do not need a doctor's note, they do not need anything that says this child should. It's not a matter of should, it's a matter of, does the family choose to participate in independent study? Now, we are required to implement re-engagement plans for those individuals that are not engaging in their instructional opportunities through independent study, but at least for that first piece of it, every child and every family has the right to request independent study and receive independent study.
Thank you for that. And with that, my question really is, how is truancy being dealt with in this situation, or is it kind of like something where?
That is a real struggle that we are working our way through. You know, the, this is probably not the time to be overly aggressive in terms of addressing truancy, but really focusing on strategies to engage attendance. And there's a difference between truancy and attendance. So, Lake County has a truancy problem, and when we, even before COVID. And when we look at our student attendance figures for our first, second, and third graders, and I always pick those grades, because those grades are typically not choosing to cut school, our numbers are amongst the lowest in the state. So, how do we balance that truancy problem with what is now an attendance and engagement problem because of the complications of COVID is a complex conversation that does, at this point in time, I think, really has to focus on re-engaging families, re-engaging students, and in the long term, partnering with our district attorney's office to reimplement a truancy program at some point in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I just have one simple question, actually, it's a two-part question. We've kind of touched on the vaccination, and I'm hoping that you can provide maybe some numbers. What is our student vaccination rate for 12 and up, if you have that? And also, what is it for our staff? And what is the strategy for future vaccination clinics? I know we've worked on the mobile vaccine clinic, is that something that's, you're a part of those conversations on getting access to those mobile clinics? Just kind of curious as to what the strategy is to make sure that it's available as much as possible.
Supervisor, that's a lot of questions in one question, so I'll try to remember them. First of all, the percentage of students that have been vaccinated is roughly 20% of students have been vaccinated. Our numbers in Lake County are lower than the statewide average, significantly lower than the statewide average, and if we look at some of our comparison counties, particularly those along the coast, where we're seeing vaccination rates of students in the 80s, 85% at this point in time. So, it is obvious to us that we need to do a better job of getting our children vaccinated, our 12, or really, our teens vaccinated at this point in time. The question around staff vaccinations, we're just wrapping up the, the mandate for staff vaccinations came down a couple of weeks ago. We're just wrapping up the count on that at this point in time. We're seeing a range of anywhere from, in our districts, anywhere from 70 to 80% of staff are vaccinated. So, it should not be an overly burdensome process to implement testing for the remainder of the staff that have yet to vaccinate either, you know, many of those staff are in a situation where they cannot vaccinate, and we're going to have to continue testing throughout this The next piece of the question just slipped my mind, what was the, what was the follow-up question?
The strategies for vaccination clinics, and if you are involved with the conversations at the mobile clinic, as I think that that would be really useful, to be able to mobilize in specific areas where it's needed?
You know, I'm not going to overstep and say that we're involved in every conversation that public health has, I can't, can't address that particular piece. I know we've had conversations with public health along those lines. You know, we are now to the point where we're back into the school year, we are seeing cases develop amongst our teen and our child population, and I think at this point in time, families may be more willing to engage in vaccination clinics. So, I do believe that we, as school leaders, need to become more aggressive in making sure that we have clinics available for our families to access.
Thank you for that. And I know that it was brought up about the different school boards and the school districts and having their own local government for those specific students. I think that's what makes it difficult. I think throughout the state of California, already each county kind of had their own subset of rules of what they're, you're expected to do when you cross the imaginary lines into another territory. Same thing for school districts. It makes it confusing when they're not all forced to follow one specific set of rules, they can create their own, and I think that's what makes it really confusing for proper messaging, and so it is important for each school district to make sure that their messaging is very clear to the people that they serve. But I think that's the difficulty of it all, is the way that our government is set up, it really comes down to the local jurisdiction to make sure that our messaging is as strong as possible. So, that is a difficulty that I think we're never going to end with. We just need to be better at it and continue to strive to be better at it. Any further comments or questions before we open it up for the public? Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments from the public on this COVID-19 update? Let's go ahead and unmute Jeremy Rarick. Sorry if I said their last name wrong. Please give us your name, and you have three minutes.
Oh, can you hear me now?
We sure can.
Okay, perfect. Let me start with a comment a local teacher made online, and she said, "I wish parents that don't vaccinate would just have the shot put in their heads, put them out of their misery." Another teacher at Midtown Middle School said, or screamed at her student to not take a drink of water in class. So, what I want to do is look at the facts, what the facts are in Lake County. Lake County, COVID's been around for 18 months. There's 65,000 residents in Lake County. There have only been four COVID deaths for folks under 50 years old, only four in 18 months, and only 14 under 65 years old. There hasn't been a single death of any child under 18 years old, not one, but the board is pushing these children and young adults to run out and take an experimental vaccine that has been proven to cause heart inflammation, blood clots, neurological disorders, and death in that age group. World-renowned doctor and epidemiologist Dr. Peter McCullough was an advocate for the vaccine in January. He has performed countless peer-reviewed published studies over the past 30 years. When his patients started having severe side effects, he changed his view and recently said, quote, "This is far and away the most lethal, toxic biological agent ever injected into a human body in American history." I believe him, but it's not just him. Many doctors, including my own local doctor, have quietly advised me not to get the vaccine. Why would I risk it for my age group? The common flu is far deadlier than COVID for that age group. This has become a mass hysteria, and the board is spreading the sphere for political gain. It's kind of disgusting what you all are doing. You have children masked in schools, even though science doesn't agree with you. A 2015 peer-reviewed study showed that not only were masks ineffective, but they also increased viral transmission because of contamination. Do you think fourth graders are necessarily taking precautions to prevent contamination of their masks? Of course not. That means you're actually increasing young students' risk of viral transmission in Lake County. Another extensive peer-reviewed study out of the University of Louisville showed the same result. It concluded that masking indoors requirements had no measurable effect on COVID-19 transmission. So, why do you continue to support the anti-science position of forced masking young children? You could care less about the psychological or physical damage that you are doing to our kids. For me and the hundreds of parents that I represent at unmasked our kids in Lake County, this shit ends today.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, we have Darilyn. Again, if you could provide your full name, and you have three minutes.
I completely agree with what Jeremy said, it's all valid and provable, but also, I would like to know, clarify this, did you say that students that are vaccinated are not required to get tested, but students that are not vaccinated are required to get tested?
And if you can finish your comments, so we can get to that answer, that way we can...
Okay, then my comment is, why would they discriminate against the people who have not been vaxxed, when it's proven that the vaccine does not prevent transmission? It was not even designed to prevent transmission. So, why discriminate against the non-vaxxed? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Falkenberg, if you would like to respond to that?
First of all, I'd like to indicate that it is not our local board's decision, this is California Department of Public Health mandates that we are into, we're following here. In regard to required testing, no student is ever required to test. It just changes the protocol as to how we can move forward with each student. And there, you are correct, there is a differentiation in the California Department of Public Health guidance on how to work through situations when students have been vaccinated, as opposed to situations when students have not been vaccinated. So, you know, I choose to use a different term than you do, but it is a differentiation in processes.
Thank you for that. Next, we have Julia Bono.
Hello, can the board hear me?
Yeah, if you can maybe speak a little bit louder.
Okay, I'll try. Is my video feed available?
No, but if you can provide your name, and then you have three minutes. We don't do video feed on the Zoom.
I have an exhibit to show before the board. I've noticed that other individuals are able to show exhibits. Would it be possible, please, to show my exhibit?
I don't know of any other individual that's had the ability to show an exhibit on Zoom.
Yes, your advisors have showed exhibits.
Okay, this is, this is public comment.
All right, okay, so if you won't see it, I'll send it to you.
Please.
Okay, my name is, can I start my three minutes now?
No. Please get started.
Okay. My name is Julia Bono. Although the board and its advisors seem notably in favor of promoting widespread vaccination against COVID-19 to county residents, I would like to draw the board's attention to the questionable effect of vaccines on the number of COVID-19 cases. According to data compiled by the CDC, COVID-19 cases reached their peak in early January 2021. See the graph shown in my video feed, which you're not showing. The CDC's data shows that by January 8th, over 300,000 new positive test results were being recorded daily in the United States, although by February 21st, that number had fallen dramatically, by 82% to just 55,000. COVID-19 vaccinations were granted emergency use authorization in late December 2020, but just 5.9% of Americans were fully vaccinated by February 21st. Clearly, the COVID shots had virtually nothing to do with the notable decline in positive test results. The most sensible explanation for declining rates of COVID-19 therefore appears to be natural immunity arising from previous infections. Evidence for this is a study by the National Institutes of Health that suggests COVID-19 prevalence was almost five times higher than reported due to typically mild undiagnosed infections. I'm linking the link to you. Even the CDC notes that the available vaccines have not been that effective. It states on its website, "In late June, the seven-day moving average of reported cases was around 12,000. On July 7th, the seven-day moving average of cases reached over 60,000. This case rate looks, looked more like the rate of cases we had seen before the vaccine was widely available." I've also linked that to you. Secondly, I would like to mention the value of natural immunity to COVID-19 versus vaccination with an mRNA vaccine, such as the Moderna vaccine and the Pfizer-BioNTech vaccine that recently obtained FDA approval for use in some age groups, although it remains under an EUA for those between 12 to 16 years of age. The SARS-CoV-2 virus contains five proteins that are recognized by the human immune system after a natural infection, but the mRNA vaccines currently available only code for one protein known as the spike protein, since it appears on the spikes that radiate from the central sphere of the virus. Since the mutation can readily occur in the spike protein, but far less readily in all five viral proteins, this means that natural immunity remains far superior to current mRNA vaccines. They're easily made obsolete, as we've already seen with the rise of the Delta variant that can cause COVID-19 symptoms in fully vaccinated individuals. mRNA vaccines also have potential harmful side effects.
And your three minutes are up, if you could please finish up.
My own sister not experienced after being rushed to the emergency room with a blood clot in her heart shortly after her second wear and shot. She is now on four medications and has to resign her job.
Your three minutes are up, if you could please finish up.
Her first action to the COVID-19 vaccine was reported to the CDC VA's database by her doctors, and she remains under observation. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to phone 1113.
Yes, thank you very much. This is Dr. Will Tuttle, and I'm speaking on behalf of the children, really, and all of us here. You know, I think the point is, the great, the great journalist and writer Upton Sinclair, summed up the situation, I think, very well. He said, "The hardest thing in the world is to try to get someone to understand something when their salary depends on them not understanding it." This is the situation we're facing right now, I think, with the health director, with supervisors, the superintendent, the media, Lake County record be, all of your salaries depend on your not understanding the devastating impact the policies you're implementing and the destructive fear-based narratives that you're promoting. This was true also of Dr. Swami Nathan, the World Health Organization chief scientist who claimed the same thing that Dr. Gary Pace claimed last week, nonchalantly said that ivermectin is ineffective with COVID. So, fortunately, in India, Big Pharma doesn't completely monopol- So fortunately, in India, Big Pharma doesn't completely monopolize medicine as it does here, and there was a whole movement of tens of thousands of holistic doctors in India who knew that ivermectin is very effective and made it available to the people with great success. And so, of course, we hear none of this in our pharma-controlled media here, but now Dr. Swami Nathan is on trial in India for deliberately misleading the Indian nation about the benefits of ivermectin, causing countless deaths and suffering, and she's actually facing the death penalty for that. So maybe now she's willing in her heart to understand something, that she was merely a puppet and a parrot for the most criminally corrupt corporations on planet Earth, and that she and the policies and statements that she was told to make were directly destroying lives. The same is true here, I think, too. You know, these are not my opinions, these are really the facts of the situation. We have, if we have tribunals here eventually and the truth comes out, then perhaps people like the health director will be similarly held accountable for deliberately suppressing information about alternatives and also for deliberately refusing to investigate the devastating impacts of the vaccinations. There's something called the principle of lesser magistrates, which is the obligation that local officials have to protect the local people from tyrannical directives that come from the state and federal level. We need to be protected from them, and you are really responsible for that. So similarly, you, local government officials, could be also held criminally liable for your behavior for blatantly failing to question the pharmaceutical narrative, taking away our constitutional rights and the rights of our children, wrongly extending states of emergency, promoting the injection of deadly and harmful chemicals, and thereby contributing to the killing and injuring of people in Lake County. All of these procedures you're mandating are devastating to our health and on every level. The children have a 99.998% COVID survival rate. Their risk of death is similar to being hit by lightning. Why are you targeting them with these toxic fear and masks and so forth? So every time we have a moment of silence for someone who has died of COVID, who should we be holding accountable?
Your three minutes are up, if you could finish up, please.
Okay, I just want to say, our conscience is our greatest ally, and hopefully, we'll use our conscience to realize that it's not justifiable to refuse to understand just because our salary depends on us not understanding. Thank you very much.
So I'm going to pause for a second. I feel like I have to say something. It saddens me that we are arguing on things that I just believe are blatant, just obviously wrong facts. They're not facts at all, they're just straight-up lies that people believe. The data proves otherwise, but it's sad to me that we ignore that there was almost a 20% increase in deaths in the entire United States in the last year, and 400,000 people died from something before a vaccine was widely available. And yet, here we are fighting over the vaccine, which, if you look at all the data, the people in the hospitals and the people who are dying in large numbers are not the people who are vaccinated. Yes, eventually, when 90% of the people are vaccinated, we're going to start seeing larger numbers of people who are in the hospital that are vaccinated, but people are not going to be hurt in the same amount as what it is right now. You don't hear of refrigerator trucks for people dying from the vaccines. You hear about that at our hospitals right now that are overwhelmed. That's what's going on in the South as we speak. I'm just, and Del Norte, I'm confused why we can so easily ignore 400,000 people that died in 2020 when the vaccine was not available to the public. It's kind of disgusting to just ignore that, like it didn't even happen, and those people didn't matter. And your rights aren't being taken away. You got your three minutes. Everybody gets their three minutes. You want more than three minutes, run for office. And nobody else has taken your rights away. Nobody is forcing you to do anything. This rhetoric is dangerously disturbing to me. And you talk about humanity, but you're ignoring the deaths of so many other humans. I find that inhuman as well. So I can't continue that rhetoric without pausing and making those statements because it's just truly disturbing. Next, phone 6478.
Very well said, Supervisor Sabatia.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. If you could please get your first and last name, and then you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Madeline Bierler, and I like to utter my concern, deep concerns about the kids who should be now vaccinated, because there is 99% of non-cases for kids. They're immune to it. And now they get all vaccinated and treated like elderly people and middle-aged people, and this is emotionally very, very heavy for them, and we just really push them into their death. So many have committed suicide and are forever, forever sick and ill from these emotional pressures, and the little babies don't even ever see the mothers and friends' faces because of the masks. And I mean, it's such a disaster with all that lockdown, masks, and vaccinations, which aren't vaccinations, they're shut, and they're very dangerous. And I think you don't have to follow the orders of the state, because if the state tells you to jump over a cliff, you won't do it. I mean, why do we all obey to these non-science commands? I think this has to really stop, and I understand all these parents who are frightened with their kids about all these obligatory movements they do, and they, that infects with chemicals the whole school, and I mean, this is like, this has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Phone 2689. Please provide your name, and again, you have three minutes.
Can you put it on lap?
Hello, this is Christina Robertsman. Yes, it is very disturbing how many deaths have occurred since COVID-19 was announced due to the refusal to implement early treatment. That is our only hope forward, is implementing early treatment with drugs that have already been approved by the FDA, safe drugs. Some people may not need them, but others may. I know a person who was sent home. He went to see medical, he wasn't sick enough. They wouldn't see him, so they just sent him home. And what did he do? He went into, I believe he just went into some kind of a shutdown. You know, he wasn't taking care of himself, drinking water, made him tired, he slept, and he went unconscious, and, well, he died. They also forced, that they didn't know better, I don't think the hospital staff knew better at that time, they should know better by now, not to be putting people on ventilators. That's not the appropriate treatment. So that's not really what I wanted to say, but that I had to respond to. Yes, it's sad that all these people have died. We're not, we are upset about it, don't think we're not. But it's also tragic that the people in influential positions are following orders, just following orders, and marching our world forward to a totalitarian government. It's really time for you to look at the world news, not just the, whatever news you're looking at. Look at some of these doctors, researchers who are absolutely world-class. Look at it. Look at the research that's being done. This is an enterprise, this pandemic, that only global vaccination can end. This is an enterprise that will create more wealth for some and more sickness and death and poverty, economic devastation for others. So it's really time for you to stand up and kind of look at the information that's really out there and even risk your jobs. You know, you can always file a lawsuit yourself. But this is time, really. There's too much information out there, you've got to look at it. And children, children should not be getting the vaccination. It has been shown that their hearts, that it causes heart damage to children, they should definitely not be getting this. And the people who are dying are already...
Your three minutes are up, if you can please finish your comment.
They have comorbidities, comorbidities, they're elderly. All right, thank you for hearing.
Thank you very much for your comment. I see nothing further in the Zoom room. Anything from our board chambers for this agenda item? And seeing none, bringing it back. Any further comments before we close up?
Just one comment from the last speaker there, and when we said we need to stand up, you know, I truly believe, I think I've said this multiple times, you know, I myself and I think this board are standing up and doing what we need to do. Sometimes doing the right thing is very hard and very challenging. And I confirm a point as we talk, I said, I got the Moderna vaccine as soon as it was possible. I know my family did, and encouraged them to do that, they can make their own decisions. But standing up for our communities and doing the right thing is not always easy. And doing that, it always jeopardizes. Been threatened right here about a recall and other stuff on this diocese, but I truly believe that we are moving in the right direction. We are looking to push towards the right direction for humanity, and this is a pandemic that is real, whether you want to believe it or not, and we'll continue to work on that in that direction. So when you say stand up, we're doing it. That's why you call in every week with misinformation and misguided, you know, words over the Zoom or however you're doing it, but we are standing up, and we'll continue to do that. So just want to make that point.
Thank you very much. And I think that the point, no matter what institution we're talking about, is about keeping people safe. And it's keeping kids safe, it's keeping their families safe, because kids do not just go home to a boarding school room and board, they go home. And a lot of the kids that I know are in the area of Clear Lake, they have their grandparents taking care of them, they have their uncles and aunts taking care of them, they have elderly people taking care of them, and what happens in our schools eventually comes home to our homes. And it's so much more than just one individual. It's about the community, it's about the greater good, and everything points in the direction that we are not going to be hospitalized and we are not going to die at the rate that we've seen, and we're already seeing that decreasing. Our first surge, we had a 1.7% death rate in the county. Now, in the last 30 days, it's at 0.8%. We are reducing that because we are better protected, and we are seeing those numbers drop everywhere. It's a matter of what are we using for the protection, and is it working? And everything points to yes. And so, nobody's forcing anybody to do anything, but we got to stop looking for the alternative facts that just work for what it is that our view is. We have to look at what's happening in our hospitals. We have to look at what's happening right here in our local area, and in our local area, nine out of 10 people in our hospitals, sometimes more, are unvaccinated, and we want to protect those people. We don't want to ostracize them, we don't want to make them look like they're less of a person in our community. We want to protect them, which is why we keep talking about vaccination and helping to protect everyone that we can. It's as simple as that. We're all connected. It's not just about schools, it's about everything. Superintendent Falconburg, thank you so much for being here. Appreciate your time. You definitely filled in the hour and then some. You reached your goal. Any last words before we go ahead and close this item up?
No, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to present today, and should you seek any further information in the future, we are readily available to support.
Thank you.
Thank you, bro.
So we are a little bit behind here. It is 10:25. I do want to take, we're going to take a five-minute break. I need to consult with CAO, because I know we needed to get to an item sooner than later, and I just kind of want to check in and see what that is. So we will reconvene at 10:30 a.m. Hello, hello. Hey, we're back. Is everything continuing smoothly for all the platforms we're on? Okay, just wanted to check in before we move forward. So it's 10:30, welcome back. We are going to pick up our 10 a.m. item, redistricting, public hearing number one, introduction to the redistricting process, and this is sponsored by CAO Hutchinson.
So Deputy CEO Matthew Rothstein is going to introduce our contractor, Margaret Long, who is here today.
And if you can, please put your...
Sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. I wanted to thank you, Board, for taking up the previous item earlier this month to set our redistricting hearing schedule. I'm excited now to present Margaret Long and Carolyn Walker of Prentice Long, who will be conducting today's hearing. Thank you very much.
Good morning, and thank you for having us. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to share a screen and see if we can get our PowerPoint started so we can have a discussion regarding redistricting. As we discussed with the board prior, the process of redistricting requires us to have four public hearings. This is the first of the public hearings that we'll be holding. It was noticed in the newspaper, it was noticed on the website, and this is an opportunity for us to introduce the redistricting process. I know the board is familiar with it, but to introduce it to the public as well. I'm Margaret Long with Prentice Long. I've been coordinating with your fantastic staff this process. I have with me as well Carolyn Walker, who is an attorney for my office, who's been doing a lot of work on the public outreach components related to this process. So as we do with every public hearing we hold relating to redistricting, we just want to remind the public what this process is. Every 10 years, the census data comes out from the federal government that provides us information on the locations and number of individuals in our community. Once we receive this information, we are required to look at our boundary lines. So those are the districts that are drawn, that the supervisors are elected into. We are required to look at them and make sure that they are accurate, meaning they are proportionate, they're appropriate, they don't divide communities of interest, they are federal and California law compliant, and so this is the process by which we go through and do that. The process is, especially this year, so this is, in 2010 when this came around, the laws were a little less inclusive. And what the state legislator has decided since the last go-round is that they want this to be more inclusive, to allow the public to be more involved. And again, this is the first hearing, which is the information to the public about how they can be involved. And the concept is, is that as we do this redistricting, it's important to get the public's input, looking at what they determine to be the community of interest, looking at what they determine to be appropriate groupings. So the Board of Supervisors, through this process, is seeking input from the public to come in and provide that information in whatever mechanism you want to. We have an opportunity to share with the board how you believe the line should be drawn. You can provide that in oral testimony, you can provide that in maps that you draw yourself. We, the board and the redistricting committee accepts the information in any way you would like to provide it. There's an opportunity, again, for the public who is non-English speaking to be involved. The request should be made 72 hours if you would like some translation services provided. And we have an email set up through the county staff at redistricting@lakecounty.com, which, again, you can submit any requests you have, any questions you have, or any input you have regarding this redistricting process. Because in 2020 and 2021, the concept behind this is to make sure the public has as much access to this process as they can and be involved as they can and want to be. So again, going through the law, we're looking at AB 849, and we're looking at a bunch of different things. So when the public sits down to look at giving suggestions to the board about how to draw the maps, we do ask them to keep this in the back of their mind, that we are looking at a number of factors. Primarily, we want the districts to be geographically contiguous, meaning we want them to make sure they're all touching each other. We don't want to have islands unto themselves, and the law does not allow us to do that. We want to try to the best of our ability to keep local neighborhoods or community of interest together. This is not always possible, but again, the best of the ability of the Board of Supervisors keeping those communities together is... keeping those communities together is, is what the law requires. Again, minimizing divisions, not creating islands, easily identifiable boundaries. So again, we try not to divide things in the middle of rivers, streets, highways, bridges. We try to kind of keep all those points and boundaries together as best we can. We try to keep them as much geographic compact as we can. So what that you always say is that, you know, you see a lot of communities that have arms, so you know, they've got a little, a point and then an arm or a tentacle going off. We don't encourage that, and the law doesn't encourage that. They try to keep it as close together as possible. And of course, we don't look at anything that's discriminatory. So we make a very distinct responsibility not to divide up jurisdictions based on the political preference of individuals in that district, race, anything of that nature, economics. We don't look at those factors. We try to make it, make it very clear to the public that we will not be able to look at those factors. So the next hearing we're going to have, public hearing, is going to be talking about the communities of interest. And so again, we want to keep this in the back of the mind if anyone wants to participate in this conversation, to understand what a community of interest is. So again, we're looking at trying to keep populations that share social and economic interests together. Again, looking at for single purposes. A lot of times you'll see these as special districts or cities. A lot of times you'll see them as shared facilities or shared resources. And looking at those, again, the definition, we provided some examples of that, transportation facilities, work opportunities, you know, if they have a, a very common interest in a economy, that would be considered a community of interest. But we don't look at political parties. We don't look at the current supervisor's positions. We look at then, we look again at what the geographic makeup is. So for timelines for this process, again, we are looking to get the delivery date of the census data from the federal government, September 30th. Again, California has asked for some time to be able to adjust it based on prisoner population. So they're going to go back and just look at the federal data that's provided, and we're already getting federal data at this point. So I'm hoping California's deadlines would be pushed up as, as well. But California is looking to adjust it based on the home of the individual in the prison, not based on their, where they are currently housed. So they have to do an adjustment on that, and they're asking for 30 days. Maps are looking to be published on November 5th, or slightly prior to that, again, and looking to have a final adoption from the county on November 30th, because the deadline for us to get this done is December 15th, 2021. So how the county residents can be involved, again, we're going to be holding four redistricting public hearings. They're going to be available via Zoom, so we encourage the public to attend. This is the first one to provide the information on how to get access to it. The next one, again, we're going to be looking at communities of interest. We will be publicizing forms that people can fill out to kind of give us an idea of what they view as a community of interest. We'll be providing our suggestions and looking forward to comments on that. The November 2nd hearing, again, is going to be the, the hearing where we actually start looking at draft maps. This one's scheduled for nighttime, so that the public can be more involved in it. We're looking at doing it on November 2nd at 6:00 p.m. So again, looking to get as much public as involved by doing this meeting at night. And this is again, the one where the public is going to, can come in with suggestions on maps, and the Board will actually be presented with maps that are drawn and suggestions so that they can start looking at the actual lines. The final meeting will be November 30th, and that's where we'll be adopting the final map. So again, between November 2nd and November 30th, we'll be working to take all of the considerations from the Board and the public and presenting a final map for adoption by the Board of Supervisors. These are all available via Zoom, and get encouraged to, to participate. So how can residents get involved? This is, again, the important part of this conversation today is, is that the Board of Supervisors needs you to get involved. We are asking that if you have any maps that you would like to draw, please submit them to the redistricting website you see here. The Board has, the Board and staff has also made a website. It is on the Lake County website, under Government, Boards, Board of Supervisors, and Redistricting. So if you go onto the website and you go onto Board of Supervisors, it is a, one of the tabs you can tab on to get in there. We will provide additional information there. We'll provide samples of the drafts, any forms that we submit, meeting minutes, that will all be on there. So if you have any questions related to that, that's a really good first place to go. Again, the public can also listen versus, versus a bunch of different social media. And these videos will also be, they are recorded, and they will also be available to view as well if you're unable to attend the meetings. So again, if you have questions, we encourage you to go to the website. That's a really good first place to go. It's, it's up and running, already has great information on it. If you have anything you'd like to submit or specific inquiries, the redistricting@lakecountyca.gov is the great way to do that. And I thank you to the staff of Lake County. Working with Matthew has been an absolute pleasure, very responsive, very knowledgeable, and, and making this process go very smoothly. So I really am very appreciative of that, and, and IT and GIS staff as well. But again, the process works because we get people participating in it. So the goal of today is to encourage folks to participate, encourage folks to reach out with their thoughts and suggestions. It will all be considered. Everything is taken into consideration and looked at. And so we encourage you to do that. And thank you for the opportunity to, to do that quick PowerPoint, and I'm happy to answer any questions before we open it up for the public meeting.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Any questions or comments from the Board? And so I do know that the federal government did a quote-unquote dump of a lot of data, and I tried looking for it. It really is not available on a local level until September 30th. That's where, because I think it was much more 30,000 view of, 30,000-foot view of everything that's inside that data, rather than drilling it down to like the city of Clear Lake or city of Lakeport or things like that. Am I correct on that, that it is out there, but it's not available with that kind of specificity?
You're absolutely correct, Supervisor. They are, it is, it is a, the data dump is a great way to describe it. And we are hearing that they're going to continue to do that and provide it more information before September 30th, but the, the date we still have is September 30th. So we will, if, if they are gracious enough to give us the information ahead of time and California is able to process it, we'll, we'll speed up our process as best we can.
Okay. Thank you very much.
But we're still working on those timelines.
Okay. Thank you so much. I do have a question, and I don't think it's within the purview of the contract that we have with you. So the question might be to staff. I think it's important for us to pay attention to the legislative districting that's also going to happen within the state, both for federal and for the state of California. What kind of level of scrutiny are we having on that? Are, are we in a group that is active in all of that? Because that's really important to us as to who our future representatives will be. I know we did write a letter saying, please keep us within the scope of Napa and Sonoma County with Mike Thompson. Just kind of curious of what, what level of participation do we have?
And so I'm going to defer to Matthew for that, answer to that question. He's the staff person that has dug into this the most. Matthew?
Yes, and we've not been directly involved with, at the federal level to this point. We have certainly indicated to our representatives that we would like to be apprised of, of any updates, but we have not received any to date. And I can definitely follow up on behalf of your Board.
And I'm taking it's probably similar timelines for all of the above than what we're dealing with locally?
Yes, very probably so.
Okay. Thank you so much. Just something that I'll check in from time to time, just because I think that's a really important factor for us to make sure that we have the proper representation moving into the future. If there's no further comments or questions, let's go ahead and open it up to the public, both in the boardroom and the Zoom room. Any public comment? And I'm sorry that we haven't changed the final date from December 15th to anything earlier for you. I know for, from the registrar voter's perspective, it's going to be a, a tight window. And, and we'll just have to work together to make sure that that's as, I hate to say as simple as possible, because it doesn't sound simple. But hopefully everything will be done in time so that it doesn't have to push your deadline a little closer. I see no hands up in either the boardroom or Zoom room, so let's go ahead and bring it back. And today was a public hearing presentation. There's no actions needed to move forward, but we do have our schedule of meetings that are coming up. And Margaret, if you can please let us know again when the next meeting is?
Absolutely. The next meeting, one moment, and I'll pull it up. I'm happy to go through all the meetings one more time, just because I think that's very important information. So the next meeting is October 2nd. It'll be at 10 a.m. in, in the boardroom.
It's a Saturday. It's a Saturday.
It is a Saturday. And so it'll be again, done as a special meeting. And that will be the opportunity to talk about communities of interest. The next meeting is November 2nd. That's going to be our evening meeting. It'll be held at 6:00 p.m. And that is where we'll go over the draft maps. And the last meeting will be November 30th, 2021, at 9 a.m. in the boardroom. It's been a special board meeting, and that will be when the final map is adopted.
Thank you so much for going over all that. Perfect. Well, thank you very much for the presentation, and we'll look forward to seeing you again on October 2nd.
Thank you. Have a great meeting.
All right. And so with that, we're going to take a quick pause. We're going to go into closed session. I'm hoping that 10 minutes, 15 minutes maybe at the most. So we will reconvene. Let's just go ahead and give a little bit extra time. We'll reconvene at 11:10 into open session, and we will continue with item 6.4. And we are going to go into closed session to go over 8.3, public employee appointment pursuant to government code, section 54957B1A, Appointment of Community Development Director. And with that, we will go ahead and go into closed session, and again, reconvene at 11:10 a.m.
Seems like the microphones are, okay, they're on now. So Johanna, are you ready to go?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I got the thumbs up. It's 11:10. Welcome back. And I'm looking at Ms. Grant. I need to ask if there was any action taken in our closed session? Okay. So asking if any action was taken during closed session?
None taken.
Okay. No action taken. Thank you very much. And let's move on to 6.4, 10:30 a.m., consideration of response to the 2020-21 grand jury final report, and CAO Hutchinson.
Again, I'm introducing Matthew Rothstein, who will present this response.
Thank you, and good morning again, Board. As you're aware, each year, the Lake County Civil Grand Jury compiles a series of reports making recommendations to improve government systems, procedures, and methods of operation. The Civil Grand Jury's final report collects findings and recommendations based on their investigations. Pursuant to the California Penal Code Sections 933 and 933.05, your Board is required to respond to grand jury recommendations as requested. And staff have been privileged to work with your Board to prepare the draft response that was attached to your agenda. And this response uses the grand jury's recommended format and includes answers to all recommendations for which a response was required. We recommend that your Board acts today to approve the response and authorize the Chair to sign. If you find that any changes are needed, those must be adopted no later than Tuesday, September 14th, to allow timely submission. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions on the reports that we were provided? So there is, I was reading through this, and it didn't catch my attention until I was thinking about it later on. I believe it's on the collected departments report. And I know that the, the, there's specific answers. There's agree, already done, agree, will be done by a certain time, neutral, and then disagree. And maybe I don't have them exactly correct as far as what's available. And I'm looking through it, and I'm sorry that I just thought of this, that I, I feel like at one point, there stopped saying agree or disagree. And I'm wondering if we need to make sure and label it. And I'm looking at page 12 and page 13. I want to say this is from Ms. Grant. Is it enough to, like, the, one of the responses was, it says, it is presently being done and so has already been implemented. Obviously, that would be agree. Although an implied commitment seems amorphous, elected officials, has already been implemented. Is there a way that we can add the response specific to, rather than having to try and figure out what the response is?
In the body of, of the county council.
Because it started out with the agree and disagree, and then eventually, as we got to the bottom of document, it was more of an implied response based on the four responses that we have. And then, of course, the language, and was wondering if it's necessary to make sure that it has what is expected as far as those four responses, and then a, a verbal response, or if that verbal response is enough to imply which one of those it is?
I don't mean to step on anybody's toes, but I'm prepared to respond to that if that's desirable, Chair.
Go for it, Matthew.
Please.
Okay. So your Board's response is required, right? So staff always endeavors to make sure that your Board's response follows precisely the form that is required, both at statute and the grand jury's recommendations. With the departmental response, those essentially function as background for the preparation of your Board's response. We do include them so that the grand jury likewise has that background. However, your Board's response is the one that must be compliant as to form, and it is as prepared today.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. But that's all I had on the reports. Appreciate the staff time for getting all of the responses. And also thank you to the grand jury for your questions and your concerns, and, and hopefully everybody learned a little bit more about our processes and a better understanding of how we're moving forward and what's being implemented and what's being worked on. Any comments or questions before we open it up for the public? Okay.
I would just add, Mr. Chair, that, that we're off to a good start with this year's grand jury as well. They invited me over to give them kind of an overview of county operations, and they have lots of questions and interest in, in our work, so we, we look forward to the coming year with them.
All right. Thank you for that. And so we have Bridgette on the Zoom room. Let's go ahead and unmute Bridgette. And please provide your full name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is Bridgette McQueen, and I'm just, want to make sure you guys got my emails. This is in reference to the, the people report in the grand jury, and also the claim and the sewer. As you know, we have a lateral with, it's a public lateral with 50 homes at stake. If we don't take care of the sewer issue, we have the risk of the lake. And I, I know that your goal is to keep people safe, it's keep the lake safe.
Bridgette, Bridgette, I, I don't mean to be rude and interrupt. I just want to make sure that we stay on the topic at hand, which is the response to the grand jury report. The issue and incident that you're discussing right now is a separate issue and incident.
Okay.
That, I'm sure we would love to discuss, but it's not on our agenda at this moment in time.
So it looked like it was on the agenda. When would be a good time for me to address this?
So you could always bring it to us during public comment. That is not based on any item on our agenda. You can discuss it with your district supervisor and see if maybe that can be brought back to the Board. But at this moment, again, you can discuss the response to that specific item within the grand jury, and if you have issues with the response, and which is what we're looking at right now, is the staff response and Board response to the grand jury report.
So I'm looking at the staff response to the grand jury report. Which was from Scott Harder at Special Districts? Is that, is that pertinent or not?
And like I said, you can discuss, we, we are looking to file these responses today. And so if you want to discuss the response, yes, but discussing, we, we can't solve the issue today of what is occurring when it comes to the sewer and stuff, or the lateral. But the responses, we can discuss to see if there needs to be any changes or anything like that.
Okay. Well, I guess I want to ask a question. Did you get my email in response to Scott Harder's response yesterday? And do you have any questions to that? In that, some of the inaccuracies that he had in his response and that he informed us, which was not true, and which was not true, and how I had to handle the spill, which was not my responsibility at all?
And so I believe that we all did receive the emails. At least I know I did. I'm getting some nods from supervisors next to me. Appreciate your feedback. And at this time, from my personal perspective, the evidence that has been brought to me leads me to wanting to continue with the comments provided by our staff.
What does that mean? You want to continue with the comments that, that the engineering report that you got that shows that it was intended to be on public property doesn't apply?
That's not what I said. I said I wanted to, I'm ready to move forward with the comments provided by staff on the Grand Jury report analysis.
Okay, okay, so I'm going to work through with Tina on this. Because last time I emailed her, she was saying I need to talk to Anita Grant. So I'm just confused on how you want me to work with all of you to resolve this.
And I would say start there and maybe it does need to lead to Ms. Grant. But at this moment in time, again, the issue itself will not be resolved today. And so please start there and hopefully we can come to an understanding of what needs to be done.
Okay, great, yeah. Tina, I'll be in touch with you.
Thank you very much. Any further comments on this item? Seeing none in the boardroom and seeing no more in the Zoom room. Bringing it back to the Board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the response to the 2020-21 Grand Jury Final Report and authorize the Chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, a second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please, Johanna.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Campbell?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you to all involved in getting this to us in timely fashion so we can get it filed. Let's move on to item 6.5, 11:00 a.m. item, Public Hearing. Consideration of an Ordinance Extending Interim Urgency Ordinance Number 3107, 10 Months and 15 Days, which establishes a moratorium on the issuance of early activation permits for land use projects within the unincorporated area of Lake County. An authorized Chair to sign. I do want to make a little caveat to this. This is not, I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, a moratorium on early activation. It's moratorium on early activation for cannabis, is that correct? Because it does not say that in the title. It just says land use projects.
Should be on all land use projects, correct?
Land use?
Early activation for all projects.
Correct.
Okay. If it's possible, please.
Is your introduction complete, Mr. Chair?
If we could please put the mask over the nose, please, and thank you. Was the first moratorium cannabis related?
No, it's
It was early activation for all, early activations? Okay, thank you for that. Okay, that's where my confusion leads from. And so C.A.O. Hutchinson, please.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. Susan Parker is going to present the staff report. But before she does, I just want to again thank the ad hoc committee of your Board that has been working with staff in support of the CDD Department. They've had a vital role in getting this back to your agenda. We've worked with them every step of the way. And so I think they'll have a few comments after Susan does the initial presentation. Go ahead, Susan, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Board. This public hearing provides your Board and the residents an opportunity to consider an ordinance extending the interim urgency ordinance number 3107 for 10 months and 15 days. This ordinance extends the moratorium on the issuance of early activation permits for land use projects located within the unincorporated area of Lake County. On July 27th, your Board adopted the interim urgency ordinance after considering the recommendation by the Community Development Ad hoc Committee. That interim urgency ordinance took effect immediately upon its adoption and continues in effect until September 9th. At that meeting, your Board made the determinations outlined in the interim urgency ordinance that included addressing the backlog of early activation permits and reviewing and/or modifying the early activation permit process. As of August 26th, the Planning Division backlog included 145 cannabis use permit applications under review and 45 unassigned projects, 17 of which were early activation cannabis permit applications. And since the effective date of the moratorium, two early action permits that were in the pipeline have been issued. As required, the Community Development Department issued a publicly available written report 10 days prior to the public hearing describing the need to extend the moratorium. After careful consideration, we found that no immediate alternative was available. The impactful actions related to the outsourced professional services were deemed the most productive and have the potential for the most immediate impact. We have determined that there is no feasible alternative to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the specific adverse effects identified as well or better with a less burdensome or restrictive effect. And with the adoption, and then, then the adoption of a proposed moratorium extension. And with that, I yield to the Community Development Department Committee members, Supervisor Simon and Paeska. Thank you.
Yeah, we bring this back to you, obviously, you know, after the approval. And we've worked through the process as a committee and concur with our community interim Community Development Department and Director as we move forward with this, asking for the 10 and a half month, 10 day, 10 month, 15 day extension. Let me get those dates exactly right. Yeah, the 10 month and 15 days extension. You know, as we're working through the process, when we brought this for all early activation projects, we were looking to really give the Community Development Department to really get a handle on where we're going here. As we knew, you know, the numbers to be, it was just, it was overwhelming at this point. And we thought that bringing this forward would be the necessary need to help us move forward in really streamlining the process eventually. With that in mind, we feel that this opportunity for the 10 and a half, 10 month hiatus will give us the opportunity to do some things that we've been working on collaboratively as the committee and in the department. One, you know, hopefully moving forward here eventually with Community Development Director. I know that we've been working on as an entire Board. The other will be looking at the processes that need to be done. And today, we took some actions, hopefully, to move forward with hopefully strengthening that department, some other planning opportunities, planners, and other things as we really move forward in this process of bringing on new Community Development Director. We're also looking, as we have talked about as a Board, to think outside of the box as far as contracting and other opportunities that we'll be supporting the department with, because we just don't have the workforce to do it. And as laid out in the numbers that were put in some of the information that was provided by C.A.O. and also Susan, you know, the interim director, as Carol, at this point of CDD, you know, gives you the information and the understanding where we're going. It is a challenge as we move forward, but we do believe this is the right direction and the right step to take at this time.
Susan, with the amount of applications that we have in the pipeline and the current staff levels, how long would it take to work through what we've got just now before us?
I think, again, this is a, an estimate because every application is different just because of whether it's complete or not. But I would say almost two years to get it through completely. And that's because we're not just dealing with the cannabis applications. We're also reviewing non-cannabis applications. So combine that, I would say at a minimum, two years.
So we've really dug into this, Susan and Carol especially. But Supervisor Simon and I have been meeting regularly. There have, the contractors have been put in place to help take the load off. We've hired planners, we're hiring more, we're trying to build the capacity, we're working on our processes. You know, this, we are deeply committed to working through this backlog and setting this whole department up for success. And one of the things that we really feel is important, we feel very strongly, is that we continue with this moratorium on, on early activation so that we can accomplish those goals.
Just some of the conversation, obviously, too, as we're working through that process, with the streamlining process being, you know, for the foreseeable future, the, the opportunity for us to really get folks into the permanent, you know, use permits. And that's really where we want to push our opportunities to do as we support the new industry coming in. But also other projects that will be coming. And as you know, we are, we have the Economic Development Task Force and other things. But we really, we've talked about this for the past few years. We really need to look at that streamlining process for all projects coming into Lake County as we're trying to develop the economic development opportunities that are here. So it's all going to go hand in hand. But at this time, once again, like I said, we feel like this is the pertinent decision to be made by the Board and that's why we're presenting it today.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Anything further before we open it up for comments and questions?
I just wanted to thank the committee and Carol and Susan for this hard work. I know this is a tough decision to be bringing to the Board and I, and I don't take it lightly. And I know you didn't either, bringing this forward. But I think we have to do what's best when this, you know, committee brought this forward because they think this is what is the best for right now to organize and reevaluate this department. And so I definitely agree with this.
Okay, any comments or questions from Board members? Supervisor Campbell?
I'm just, I just want to highlight that in reading this and going through the memo and asking the specific questions, this does not affect anything in the past. And just highlighting that so that people watching and listening will know that it doesn't affect anything like that. It just, it just affects anything being submitted within the next 10 months and 15 days is what I'm understanding, right? Thank you.
Right, so the projects that are already in are still in progress.
Thank you.
So in reading this, I struggle to put this in with where the industry is currently and where it's going. And it's moving fast. Prices have dropped, which I'm not unhappy about, but it changes things. And our timelines, and I look around the county, our timelines are not horrendous, but they are what they are. And I know some people down in San Diego, took them three years to get accomplished. Some people in Mendocino are still not finished, even though Mendocino has a whole lot of things happening. They're still under about 87% to 90% provisionals, meaning they're not really done with everything that they need to get done. I think that we, the window is getting shorter and shorter or smaller and smaller because of the price value drop. And by doing this, and let's be real, we're talking about cannabis because I don't know how many early activations have occurred for any other business in the past two years at this moment in time. So while we say all applications, we're really mostly discussing cannabis here. I think that we, I would like to make it a smaller timescale personally. I think January 1st, by saying 10 months and 15 days, that means whoever wants to submit an application is going to miss out entirely possibly by next year. And I think we need to look at something that's going to be doable, viable, and least disturbing to our environment. We could do 5,000 square feet, we could do 10,000 square feet. I think that if we start looking at those small things, that it's an opportunity. And I know that, I'm making assumption, even though my colleagues have their own comments, that we can stop this anytime we want. But if we have stopgaps and milestones, then we can make sure that we are working towards something that is going to work. Early activation has its issues. I think that if we are going to have an early activation in the future that's cannabis related, it needs to be something else other than an early activation because six months on a year state license makes zero sense for that to overlap and not have the same timelines. So I think there's things that we need to look at to see what's possible. But 10 months and 15 days and saying that it ends on July 25th is basically saying what we have in the pipeline is it and we're done. Because I think that if you can't start by next year, the following year, it's going to be very minimal as to who can and who can't get started. And so I want to make sure that we still continue the conversation of what does a fixed early activation look like rather than a no early activation at this moment in time. I'm concerned about the 10 months and 15 days. I think it's, it's too long. And it's also, if it is across the board, I don't want to slow down other potential projects, whatever those may be, that could utilize the early activation. I know there's been conversations about early activation being used for previous packing sheds to be brought back to life and using as a processing plant. That would be a really good use of an early activation that can lead to jobs, that can lead to something very substantial here. And if we do a, a, across the board halt for potentially 10 months and 15 days, I'm concerned that that helps us miss out economically. I know that there's a lot of capacity issues and that's what we're dealing with and that's why this is brought to us. But the capacity issue will go away on its own if we're not open for business as well. So that's my one concern. I don't want to stop this, but I think the timeline's too long. And so I don't know who put their pen up first, but I said something that stimulated thought.
Just wondering, you know, those conversations you had about the timeline was a consideration that we had, you know, as a committee. And at this point, Anita, you can correct me if I say something wrong here. But this is under this urgency ordinance and moving forward, the shortest timeframe that we have to, to offer at this point. And ultimately, I just want that, if I'm saying the right thing, clarify that also. Because we did have those conversations too, as a committee.
What's 65858 of the government code provides is exactly what you said. In that quote section, this is the shorter of the two times. In this case, because the urgency ordinance itself was first adopted by your Board without, it was on a public agenda, but not pursuant to a public hearing, which 65858 allows, you are given the option of extending it for 10 months and 15 days. And actually, under sub A of 65858, you can subsequently extend it for a year. Again, fourth is vote. The longer period of time of 22 months and 15 days is when you've had a public hearing at the beginning and then a public hearing for the extension. And the reason for that is, and the reason for the 45 day timeframe is because it is an urgency ordinance and your Board needs to make sure that the public has an opportunity to speak. The other thing, if you'd permit me, that I would like to also say is that this only relates to early activation. Use permits can go forward. And because frankly, of the level of confusion with regard to early activation, which under both sections that are cited here, the 27.4 and 27.13 of the zoning ordinance, these are a rarity. They are supposed to be a rarity, not commonplace. And somehow, they began to morph to be something usual with environmental review of the type that normally you would see for a use permit. What that should mean then is there are a large number of use permits which will give the applicants and certainly cannabis growers the opportunity for certainty. Because a use permit is, is always for at least 10 years and it goes forward with the conditions as opposed to a six-month early activation. Now, with regard to the 10 months and 15 days, if your Board determines, the staff comes back to you and has everything that your Board envisions being done, which could be, you know, a couple of meetings, under this urgency ordinance done, you can rescind this. You're not mandated to hold it for the 10 months and, or 10 months and 15 days. But this is the length of time the public is informed you may hold it. And again, most of this and the deadlines are to inform the public at large as to what the scenario is going forward. But again, if your Board determines to, that actions can be taken more quickly or more perhaps spot fixes, whatever, anything that happens as staff and community development is looking at this, your Board can rescind the ordinance if you feel the task has been accomplished at six months or five months. This is in the control of your Board. But you're right Supervisor Simon, the statute provides for two timeframes and the lesser of the two is the 10 months, 15.
Supervisor Paeska?
So
So, and this question is for Susan, and maybe you can explain the process. So one of the biggest issues that we were confronted with in the beginning was this mass congestion, because we have applicants with the permit process and the EA application simultaneously being worked through. And the goal with reducing the EAs is to streamline the process, to get those applicants for the use permit through the, more easily through the process. So can you kind of speak on those, those kind of two simultaneous applications and the struggles that staff was having moving them both through?
Yes, I can briefly, because there are two distinct paths. And from the point of application or intake, you know, there's the pre-application meetings, the review for completeness that has to be completed within 30 days. Then subsequently, we submit incomplete letters if needed. Then we wait for their response. So it's a lot of back and forth, so you're talking, you know, we're already talking weeks into this. Preparing the RFRs and the AB 52 notifications, which is our agencies and our tribal units and other different agencies, of course. And then we allow for a time period for them to comment on it, then there's the site visit, then we review the agency comments after those 30 days, and then at that point in time, there's a determination, you know, of CEQA. You know, does it require an initial study? Is it a categorically exempt project? I mean, that takes review and time, and at that point, you know, I mean, that's happening all at the same time. And then if it does require, because it's, even though it's two paths, the process of review is the same until a certain point, whether it's a CEQA or a CAT or a category exempted project. But then the next, I would say, two to three months is the CEQA review, preparing the staff report, the initial study review. I mean, there are a lot of steps that it takes, and it can take, at a minimum, 30 weeks to get to a certain process, and that's, everything falls into place if all the stars align, which has not been our experience to date, just because it's so new and the people who are cultivating are new to it, too, most of them, not all. Does that answer your, does that help answer your question at all, Jessica?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
So I know your comment about the window closing and we have a small amount of time, I, I feel like that's how we got in this situation. It's been only three years, we've been absolutely inundated with applications, we've got some really great projects, we've made a lot of progress, but some, you know, at this point, we have to continue this pause so that we can do our best work. So we can have a high standard, so we can move forward with, with our, with our department properly reviewing things, so we can have our processes updated. All of these things are, you know, this, think of this 10 months as an investment so that we can do our very best work.
And I appreciate the comment, but if we wait 10 months, there, there may not be that much more work to do. And I think that there's a reason and purpose behind a moratorium, and we've already been in it for 45 days. And in fact, I'm going to pause right there. How come we can't extend it for another 45 days? What avenue are we taking that we can't do that again? I know in the past, I've seen that where you can extend it. Is it because it's an urgency ordinance? Is it, is it, for some reason, I feel like I've done that before. I don't think it was here in the county, I think it was in the city of Clear Lake that we extended it, but it wasn't for another 10 months?
Well, under, again, 65858 of the government code, which is the specific section when you're looking at making some adjustments, changes, modifications to the zoning ordinance, which is the one that's applicable. The 45 days is the initial period, and after notice in a public hearing, the legislative body may extend for 10 months and 15 days. It's not to say that you have to, but whatever period of time you extend to is your extension period.
So we can do less.
You can do less, but then you're done.
It's not, it's not the lowest number that we can use. We can do three months if we wanted to.
You can, if you, if, as a board, you believe you'll, you will accomplish all of the tasks that you're setting out for staff in terms of streamlining this. And when you were talking before about streamlining the use permit process, much of what with regard to the initial study for particular types of properties, there are many jurisdictions that have found ways to streamline this process by looking at the nature of the property and, you know, what certain conditions have to, have to be, be in existence at the time in order to qualify for a negative deck, a mitigated neg deck, or a full-blown EIR. So there are a number of ways that the process can be incrementally sped up as you're looking at the use permits by themselves without the added issues. And if you're talking long delays of, of, you know, eight, nine, 10 months to a year or two on use permits, but you've got an EA that expires in six months, you have an issue because now they've begun and still can't move forward. So that also creates a problem. But with regard to this, if your board wanted to set it at a different time period, you may, but a strict reading of 65858 would tell you that's your extension. And then your choice after that is you could extend it for one year. And that's, that's what it says, you may extend it for one year. So what I would advise you is if, if the 10 months, 15 days, your board can ask periodically for status updates and reports on this. You, you have a committee that's, that's dealing with some of this. So you can use that time if at any point you don't feel that the work is being done that you wanted to have done, which I doubt very much would be the case here, or if you feel that another direction should, should occur, or if you think the lion's share of what your board envisioned has, has been accomplished, you can rescind. There's nothing that precludes you from doing that. That's a very simple action, it just comes back on to rescind. The issue with, with pinning down a lesser timeframe is, at this point, the, the report that was done and published is rather perfunctory because it's early days. And until you actually get into the meat of an issue, it's very difficult to be able to gauge time. What you can certainly do is require those reports to occur and be submitted to you on a quarterly basis, or, you know, semi-annually, or whatever you want, so that you can gauge that process, and also then control the timeframe. But I'd be careful in terms of giving too short a timeframe, because you may be this close and not done. But that's just from a legal perspective. Obviously, your board has to do this operationally in the way you think is best.
Thank you. Supervisor Price.
So I understand there's changes in the market, and there's going to be adjustments, but we're looking for a sustainable industry, and we can't rush that. We have, really have to take our time, work through this immense backlog that we have. If we were to not do this, or, or just do this for a short period of time, we're going to be right back where we were six months ago. So just, you know, I said it before, this really is an investment for how we're going to perform going forward.
I, I don't get how eliminating a potential process for development is an investment. I think that we, 10 months, I get it, we can stop it, but once it's passed in, taking it out, especially if you're not within the committee itself that wants to take it out or not, is going to be difficult for any other board member to make the change, once this is set in stone. I would say, I'd like to add that by January 1st, what are we, what is our plan? What are we doing? I would like to have that conversation before January 1st. We, we need to be as prepared as possible to be open for business who may need an early activation outside of cannabis, within cannabis, but what, what does it mean? I, I agree, it needs to be changed. I think our processes is incorrect. I think they should be seen as the same thing. It's not like you're using two separate properties and planting over on the west side, but your use permit is on the east side when it comes to your early activation, so it's within the same scope of what the entire project is. It's not two completely separate projects. So I, I've always heard that it's two separate timelines, but I don't understand why it has to be that. And I think that's basically, our processes have been done that way, and we need to, to figure out how to make it the same process. But again, I, I'm just concerned about the 10 months, and in my opinion, once this is passed, the only people who are going to be able to make it end earlier than 10 months is when the committee feels it's ready to come back out of the 10 months. And so I, if we can put some milestones, just because I feel I can't change the 10 months, that's, that's the atmosphere I'm feeling, if we can put some milestones that by January 1st, let's have a review, what have we done to solve early activation? What processes have been put in place to help expedite and make it more efficient for early activation? And what does early activation mean as we move forward in the future? Rather than not having ti, milestones set within this, I think we need to set those milestones in there, with hopes that maybe by April or March, we can say, here's what we want to do and what we want to change. I know it's going to take time, it's going to take conversations, but saying 10 months, we're done, when all the, what that does is close a window for the 10% or the 5%, whoever it is, and I agree, it's, if you don't have pre-disturbed land, I don't even see how that can be an early activation, because there is going to be environmental impact, and early activation is no, very little to no environmental impact, no grading, no things like that. I think that we created a very vague and gray concept of what that was, and I think it's very simple, in my personal opinion, to create the black and white rules and regulations so that it has the minimal impact, and, and we can make it be a part of the process rather than a separate process of the use permit. So I'd like to set those milestones, and that milestone should be what progress have we made to establish an early activation program that works, and what, what progress have we made where the processes of the use permit in conjunction with the early activation have been streamlined to work together rather than be two complete separate processes? And I'd like to hear that by January 1st.
Well, we can meet in January and definitely talk about all of these things. I mean, you're, you're absolutely talking about the processes that we need to work on. We, we have to do that, and those are the changes that we need to, to implement. But to be clear, we're still open for business. You can file an application for a permit for any of these projects, but, but early activation is the temporary permit, or the short-term permit. So we're open for business. That is not what I was saying, that we're not, we're not shutting down our economy for any reason, but we have to do this better. And so everything that you mentioned on how we, we, we make our processes better and stronger, and we look at our ordinance, that is the goal. But we can come back in January and talk about it, but I think we're, we need to, if we need the 10 months, we may, we may need the 10 months. We may not, but we have brand-new staff coming in this month and next month, and there's, there's a lot of learning that's got to happen, and we've got to dig into this, into this work with our processes.
Mr. Chair, if I may? 65858 discusses the idea that you're entering into a moratorium, essentially, because there's no feasible alternative to avoid the impacts that you're trying to avoid, and there's no less burdensome or restrictive effect. So certainly, in conjunction with this ordinance, your board could require reports be issued and presented to your board on a, whatever period of time you would like, to question, to see whether progress is being made, whether it's leading to the mitigation, the resolution of these impacts. Because I understand you wouldn't want to get to the end of 10 months and have less than a full picture as to what will be accomplished. And certainly, your board could direct staff to provide that in whatever period of time you would want to, which would also give you an opportunity to revisit the effectiveness of the ordinance.
And thank you for that. And I get it that we're open for business, but early activation gives us a competitive edge to get things going. And again, talking about all potential businesses. And I think that we need to minimize this timeline as much as possible, and I will say, I have a slight concern with what's occurred just in the last 45 days since the moratorium started, that the response I received was that we did two early activations, whatever that is, that is what it is, but that all the rest of the applications submitted are eligible, and in my opinion, that can't possibly be true. It, it, just because you had this application submitted should not mean that we have 147 that are eligible for early activation, because that creates hope where hope should not be. And so that means we haven't gone through and looked at these applications. We don't know which ones are going to really have a larger impact than others, and better understanding of what these projects are, and it's already been 45 days. So I, I'm concerned about seeing that 10 months and 15 days. I know one of our early activations is the Workright Building, that was, that happened, and I think that worked out real well. They have a good amount of staff over there, and so it's not just the cannabis cultivation, it's other businesses as well, and, and 10 months gives, deletes that competitive edge where we could lose and bleed out some of the potential jobs that we create and things like that. So I, again, I, I would like that milestone to be by the end of the year, not in January, but by the end of the year. What's the, what's the strategy? What's the plan? Because I know you guys are working on it, but I don't know what that plan or strategy is when it comes to this. And I'd like to see it by January 1st so that we can really start working on it, because I'd like to see it done a whole lot sooner than, than later, and I don't feel like I'm getting the full, and I get it, I'm not on the committee, but I'm not getting the full scope of the conversation to really understand, and please help me understand, because I don't, I don't see timelines, I don't see, I see a, a moratorium to stop us, but I would be a lot more comfortable if there was a plan that was offered of what the timelines actually look like.
So let's have that conversation in January, but I, you know, I firmly believe we need to keep the 10 months in case we need it, but we can, we can regroup in January, and at that point, we'll have our staff on board for several months, and we'll have a really, I, I think it'll be a good time for us to have that conversation.
Yeah, committing to the reporting every, you know, on a quarterly basis is absolutely what we can do. We'll continue working the process. You want to answer something, you know, we did have the 45 days. I know some of the questions were asked, like, hey, how many folks do we have in the pipeline? What is assigned, what is unassigned? So, you know, finding, you know, an opportunity to get it fixed in 45 days just wasn't realistic when we sat down and we talked about it as a committee and looking through that. So we're asking for the 10 months, we'll continue to update the board as we move through that process, continue to have the meetings, but we already know, you know, like I said, even today with some of the action we took on our agenda today, we're adding planners, we are, we are adding staff, we are moving in the right direction, but we're in need of time to work that out. So by the end of December or January, whenever we set up that meeting, starting out the first of the year, we'll have some more of those definitive answers for you. And that's what we'll work on.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, Anita, I have a question. Let's say that the ordinance passes because it needs a 4-1, or, in essence.
Four fifths.
Four fifths. And so let's say that in, in January or February, one of the four that decide feel like, I don't agree with this ordinance anymore, they can bring it back to the, to the, to the agenda and discuss it again, given time to rescind.
Your board's creating the ordinance, it's always within your power to rescind it. And as I said, the idea of the reports being done for your board would give you an idea of whether the progress being made is sufficient to justify the point of the moratorium under 65858. Because when you're talking about having a plan and a goal to effectively change in the zoning ordinance, that's the whole purpose of 65858. It can't exist unless that activity is being pursued and those improvements are going to be the culmination. activity is being pursued and those improvements are going to be the culmination of whatever time period is needed and allowed under the law. So this is a very specific code section to operate under. This isn't, this isn't a standard emergency kind of provision your board can just perpetually review every 30 days. This is an emergency with the requirement for a plan. And that plan has to come to fruition, either within the timeframes given or before. So your board does these with a goal for particular outcome. So reports would be perfectly acceptable, and your board could decide at any time, either it's been reached, or it's not going to be reached, or whatever. You can certainly also, if this doesn't work, at some point, you could devise an entirely different urgency ordinance. But when I say different, it couldn't be the same topic. Your board has options with regard to the zoning ordinance. So again, my suggestion of the reports was simply so that your board could gauge the efficacy of this urgency ordinance for you and for the county.
The other thing I'm thinking of is when, in the last year, we approved an ordinance, and we, we decided to come back in, I want to say, three or four months to readdress the actual ordinance itself. And I don't think we did, it was with the masking, masking or the fines for masking, I think it was. I forgot the number of it. But either or, there was something in, in the passing of that ordinance or that urgency. It wasn't even an urgency, it was a non urgency, it ended up having to be. But we ended up having to, we decided that we would come back at a specific time to ensure that we would either move forward or, you know. So I don't know if that applies here.
If your board wishes to have it come back at a specific time again to gauge progress, status, etc.,
With the reports.
That's completely within your purview.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to ask a quick question on that. Again, if, just to finish up the hypothetical, if it was to be brought back to the board for rescinding, it would still require four fifths?
Majority, I believe.
When you're rescinding an urgency ordinance?
I believe, like, I'll double check that for you, but I believe it's just a majority.
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure if it goes in one way and comes out the exact same, or if there's a difference in how the voting matters.
And sadly, while I prepared for all facets of 65858, I did not prepare for now.
I'm happy I could find the one question. Anything further from the board? All right, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Raise your hand if you're in the Zoom room or come up to the microphone if you're in the boardroom. Let's go ahead and start in the boardroom. We will get to you in the Zoom room. Please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hello, Chris Jennings, cannabis operator in Lake County. You know, it's pretty clear that the early activation moratorium is a direct attack to cannabis. It didn't even come about until everyone was freaking out about water usage and everything else. So I'm happy that you guys are keeping it fair across the board. But I think everyone here needs to really step back and look at the bigger picture. You know, Carol made a comment about early activations up in six months, and then you're, you know, went now because then your permit takes 10 months. Well, you can actually extend your activation a second time. And you can even get a third time with approval from a community development director. I've been early activated three times, because the county staff upstairs kept coming up with new things that wasn't even in building code context to throw at me. So I've been through the gamut, I guess you could say, the wringer. The bigger picture isn't all the cannabis projects coming in line. The bigger picture is our staff upstairs, because I hear you, Moke, we have all these people coming in, we're going to get them trained, we're going to turn this around. But no offense, I've been here, coming to these meetings for the past 10 years. And I believe Tina Scott, somebody that's been here longer than everyone else, it's the same thing. We don't have staff. We never have staff. We never have enough staff to do anything, because our staff comes and they leave. They want to come, then they want to become a cannabis consultant. And they don't even know what they're doing. And they screw up everyone's reports. Or they come here, and they come to Lake County, they get the training, and they go back home down south. So like, you know the old saying, it takes money to make money. It'd be really nice to know how much money the county has spent reinvesting in the cannabis business of running the cannabis business. You know, like, if we got to pay people more to get people in and get them going, that's what we need to do. The lady on the screen that's talking about how like, oh, it's two separate ports or an early activation doing a non early activation, they parallel together. You need CEQA in order to get early activated. And then you move on to your initial study and you wait for a use permit. The whole point of an early activation is waiting for planning department or the planning commission to approve us. If anything, we should have a law like some of these other counties have where you have one year to get through a use permit. If not, it's approved. Like, that would really put some fire in these some people and get projects moving like they should. But that's the whole point of early activation. Things take so long, and we take forever getting the planning, so we're allowed to early activate. We all have to meet the CEQA guidelines. We all have to do the bio review, the archaeological review, we have to have all these things. I think it's like appendix G or C when it comes down to it. There's plenty of people I'm sure might speak up in the Zoom room that know these things a little bit better than I do. But the problem isn't early activation and the projects. The problem is, we have so much black market out there, there's not any enforcement going on. The problem is when Excel sheet gets, forgets to get updated, and then we have 12 armed sheriff personnel on our friend's farm about to chop them, and every plant has a metric tag on it. And it took the cops two days trying to get a hold of someone upstairs to say, oh, it was a clerical error. Like, that's our problems. That's the core, core problem from an outside person and an inside person at the same time. Those are our problems. It's not early activation.
And your-
It's what we have.
Three minutes are up.
Sorry.
Final comment. Thank you. And is there anyone else in the boardroom? Go ahead and come to the microphone, and then we'll move on over to the Zoom room.
John Mas, I was talking to a young man who works in the industry and the water company, companies. And I want to contribute that it's a big problem. If you hold off with activation, you have people moving out, because they cannot flush their toilets. And yet the early activation, commercial marijuana, lets them have as much water as they want. And the vineyards have as much water without any regulation. So I'm pointing out that we're at a crisis stage with water. These marijuana growers are at a crisis stage with waiting and waiting and waiting. And we just might all have to wait too long until the county is completely empty. I just have a lot of sympathy for this guy who keeps trying and trying to do things the way the state tells him. And then the black market marijuana comes forward. It's not an easy subject. I know. It's a big problem, big problem. And the big problem sometimes is Mother Nature and the drought. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on over to the Zoom room. First is Derilyn. If you can please provide your first and last name. And you have three minutes.
I did not raise my hand.
Oh, well, your hand is raised, so we'll go ahead and-
Sorry, sorry.
No worries. Let's go ahead with call in user one. If you can please provide your name, and again, three minutes.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, wonderful. My name is Angela Ann. And I just wanted to bring up a couple things that when this urgency ordinance first went before the board, when you guys were discussing it during the original implementation, you guys had addressed the issue of it being exploited and used as a loophole before an application is completed. The difference between the workforce project and the early activation for cannabis is that the workforce project, it can cause large amounts of environmental disturbance before the studies were completed. So I just wanted to remind you guys of that and be aware that early activation, you know, there is a lot of damage done that can be rectified later on. And thanks.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Smith. Again, please provide your name and three minutes.
Hi, this is Jennifer Smith. I'm concerned that we are once again changing the rules, changing the process for these people that have been in the queue, these applicants that have been in line for quite some time. So while I understand the need for a moratorium in terms of a staffing issue, the staffing issues will always be there. I would feel more comfortable if this perhaps affected new applicants.
So if I, if I may interrupt real quick, this is-
Sorry.
-for new applicants. It's new applications for early activations that there would be a moratorium, as stated earlier, I believe. And Ms. Parker, please correct me if I'm wrong, there's 147 eligible applicants right now to ask for early activation still.
Yes, 145.
145.
My apologies, I wrote this earlier. Anyways, I just think that we need to, where's the path forward? Do we have some timelines? 10 months is a really long time. Been through a few urgency ordinances before. If this can be reviewed in December and overturned with a clear path, I think that the industry would feel a lot more comfortable. I think the priority is to get the staffing and the process and also work on those simultaneously and not one and then the other. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Sean Connell, please provide your name, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Board. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. I'm Sean Connell, District 4. I've talked to you multiple times when it comes to cannabis and early activation. Actually, I still have memorandums and emails that I sent to you in March, when we started talking about changing early activation process for cannabis applicants in the county. I do want to say that, at this point, this is becoming discriminatory, as every change, while we want to lop it into land use, it is really directed at the cannabis industry at this point in time. It has been multiple months, I believe since January, that I started talking to this board about if you really want to set yourself up for success, you need to heavily invest into this, into this industry. And by doing so, would be the first step is to establish a department. You know, with subject matter experts who could provide you pertinent, timely, accurate information on the industry in front of you, in our area, in our region, and across the United States. I've heard multiple people talk about water use. Water use is based on an old paradigm, when you were limited to 25 plants, which means that if you were going to be an economical business, you needed a massive plant in order to gain the benefit. At this point in time, we are talking about acres upon acres of canopy area, which for most businesses means a much smaller, much more manageable plant life spread across the land. As we sit here and we talk about early activation being a two-pronged process that's absolutely inaccurate, and anyone who continues to feed that to the public is wrong and should be held accountable. It is the same process. It's a $190 additional fee on the application process. As Ms. Parker has already laid out, it is the county's responsibility to accurately review that paperwork within 30 days of the application and provide you either an incomplete or a complete notice. Then it gets referred to the community agencies. That's an additional 30 days, where every department in your county has the opportunity to condition the application in accordance with their ordinance and regulations. Article 27 is very clear when it comes to early application, early activation. It's up to the community development director. Granted, in Lake County, we haven't really had a community development director in quite a few years, and all of the assistants have seemed to magically left for better and greener pastures. I cannot see how anyone can tell you that investing into a burning down, failing business is a smart investment. I think what needs to happen in this county is we need to buck up to the table. We didn't recognize that this county attracted quite a lot, quite a lot of applicants for cannabis cultivation. We are in an agricultural based county. I get mailers from this county that remind me that I live in an agricultural community where dust, odor, smell, and heavy equipment operation are a part of the conditions of living here. I think that your job at this point in time is to not enact a new ordinance, to not put in a moratorium, but instead to use your investment to establish a department where they report to you, where they can tell you how many applications for what size of canopy, in what loan, in what zoning district, in what district they belong to. So that way that we're not standing here talking about-
And your three minutes are up, if you could finish with the last statement?
Yeah, my last statement would be, I think that three minutes is far too short to give you the nuances of this industry, and that it is time for you to establish and create a department. And with that, I will let you go. I appreciate your time, your efforts, and I will be here next week to talk to you again. Have a great day.
Thank you for your comment. Jonathan Braniff, again, please provide your name, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Braniff, and I want to congratulate you all on all of your efforts in navigating some of these interesting and challenging spaces. I wanted to share with the Board of Supervisors in the County of Lake, much like with tree and technologies applying for the PGE grant, as well as the work that you're talking about here and various other activities that are happening on a countrywide basis, we wanted to basically invite the Board of Supervisors to consider approving a resolution allowing the county, oh, hold on there. What I'll do is, I'll hold off on this for a moment until, until we can revisit this on the PG&E item. I think I'm on the wrong item.
Okay. I was getting a little confused, but I didn't want to tell you I was confused. But yes, we will be to the PG&E item soon. Thank you very much. Next is Bobby Dutcher. Again, please provide your name, and you will have three minutes.
Bobby Dutcher, it does seem really unfair to, you know, encourage people to apply for something, and then after they waited maybe a year, year and a half, then create a moratorium that stops them from getting the permit that they've applied for. And since-
Again, I just, I'm going to interrupt, because again, just want to make sure it's clear to the public, I'm pretty sure it's clear to the board, that this is for new applications requesting early activation, not for applications already submitted. Again, we said 145 applications are eligible for the early activation.
On the agenda, it says the issuance of early activation.
Well, they're eligible for getting an early activation if they pass every other criteria and threshold that needs to be passed. It's, there's a process.
So the people who have applied for early activation will still be able to go forward, and might be able to approve them like next week. So this is just on applications rather than issuance.
And I don't know about the next week, but I'm going to move this to Ms. Parker to see if that is correct, that they are eligible for issuance, if they are part of the 145.
Yeah, those, those applications that are in the pipeline are eligible for review to determine eligibility if they haven't already been done so, if that hasn't already been done. And then for our unassigned, of course, those will be reviewed too. So because of the sign, they have many, many projects that they're reviewing. They probably have not completed one. And I don't know Mr. Dutcher's project, but he could, I'd be more than happy to look it up if he wants to contact me offline, of course.
I don't have a project going, but yeah, the way this reads on the issuance, if you're not going to issue anymore, that seems really unfair. People have already applied and are really close to getting their early activation. So-
Yeah, it does not apply to applications in the pipeline.
Okay. Because it seems like, since your early activation permit's running in parallel with your use permit, and I'm kind of hard to believe it creates that much more work for staff. And when you look at, it's pretty easy to keep track of staff's scorecard on these, on permits that are being completed. One of your planners has brought 30 of his projects to a planning commission hearing. The other four combined, only amount to 20. So it really seems like, you know, we just, if you could, if you get the other planners up to the speed of the one planner you have, that would get rid of a lot of the backlogs. It really seems like the backlog is due to staffing rather than the process of issuing early activation permits. So I agree with Supervisor Savatia, I would rather see this have a much shorter timeline. It could always come back in like December 31st or January 1st or, you know, in three or four months, and take another look at it. And if you needed to extend it, you could. But if by turning it off, that sends a really bad signal to the industry that, you know, you're not going to look at them again. They're not going to have a lot of confidence.
And your three minutes are up.
So I like to see a shorter time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Erin. If you can please provide your full name, and you have three minutes.
Hello, this is Erin McCarrick in Clear Lake. Hope you guys can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Thank you for clarifying Jen and Bobby's question. I had a similar question about if it was new early activations or ones that had previously been applied for. So thank you for clarifying that. Thank you to the committee and to the CDP for considering those 147 applications. Thank you to, um, the committee and to the CDD for, um, considering those 147 applications. Um, my request would be to, um, just really, really encourage communication with those 147 people, the applicants. Cannabis or not, I know some folks, um, in the Chamber of Commerce who have applications in, who also feel confused. Um, you know, there was three of us on the call who were a little vague about who qualifies for this. So, um, with good, best of, best of luck to the new CDD Director and, um, all the new staff, and just really hoping that the committee or the CDD is able to communicate to these stakeholders what they need to do and where they are in the process. Thank you for your time, thank you Chair and Board.
Thank you. And, uh, we have another hand up, and it's a repeat, just checking in in the boardroom. Is there any comments in the boardroom? All right, let's go ahead and go with Jennifer Smith, and then we'll go ahead and close public comment.
This is Jennifer Smith again. Uh, I apologize, definitely, uh, was unsure of the direction before, and I'm going to state a probably very unpopular, um, opinion in my cannabis community. But until we have a streamlined process, um, I, I don't support new early activations of any project in, in the county. Um, not just cannabis, but any project that, um, may require or has the ability to have an early activation. The department needs to get staffed up. We need qualified staff that are subject matter experts. We need a department. We need a process that isn't, um, I don't know if the processes cover some or we just don't have the staffing, but it does need to be fixed. I'm not happy about 10 months. I think that we are better than this as a county and that we can figure this out sooner. But as has been pointed out in the past, early activation was a bridge from the old program to the new program. We can't continue to use it as a crutch. People did come to the county with the assumption that they could get early activations because that was the status, and that was how the program was working. If we're going to make changes, the time is now, but let's get it fixed by January, would be my, my preference. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion or questions or comments or action.
Well, I think the last comment, um, illustrates what Supervisor Simon and I have been working on and what our goals are. And I'm more than happy to, um, set a time in January to come back and we can talk about, um, where we're at then and what our strategy is, and then we can make decisions on the timeline then. But, um, as we are right now, with the new staff coming on and all the investments that we're making in the department, I feel, um, really strongly that we need to stick to the 10 months.
And I want to respond to that, and I got to choose my words correctly. Uh, last week, we didn't approve of a contract. I mean, eventually we did because it came to us differently because there was no agreement in front of us to say why we should approve that. Here, we're approving a, a, a moratorium for a longer time, and there's no plan proposed here. If it's possible, please bring us a plan before January so that we can see what is occurring to get this fixed. Right now, it's saying, go for it, fix it, and I don't know what that means. Uh, because it's just asking for 10 months. I don't know what the strategy or what the timelines look like. And I think that if we do continue on any other type of moratorium, it is going to need that level of specificity as to why is it a moratorium? And what is the plan to get out of the moratorium and into a better place? Right now, it's rhetoric. It's not anything specific that's shown to the public and to the Board as to this is what we're going to do today because this is what we're working on to fix for tomorrow. And, and I'd love to think that it's, it, there is a plan, but I don't see it. Therefore, I'm asking, can you please bring that plan sooner than later? And then bring us an update in January.
Yes, and, um, I think, you know, one of the reasons we don't have that plan for you is because we are waiting for staff. And we really need, um, to have the input of some of these positions filled, and that's really the next step.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
I just want to follow with Jessica here. You know, we, we are, we know that we have to work on this as we're doing as the committee. There are steps and processes need to be done. The Community Development Director is a big piece of that. Um, and, and we are all working on that together. So to say that we don't know what the plan, the plan is to get a Community Development Director, to get this thing moving forward, and to really move the department to where it needs to be and be ready for next year's growing season in a more proactive way. And that's, i- if you don't know that, I'm, I'm sorry, but we know it's, it's on our agenda today of what we're doing. So those steps and processes are happening. I understand what you want by the end of January is what you're asking for. And by that time, we should be able to have some more definitive, uh, project timelines as we're moving forward with the updates. And we'll continue to work on that as a committee. I know that, uh, CAO Hutchinson and also Susan Parker will be involved with that, and all the, uh, folks that need to be involved in those conversations. So we hear you loud and clear, but today, uh, we're bringing this ordinance because we believe this is the path forward that we need to take, so. And I'm in agreement with the 10 months at this point, but willing to review that and to work hard between now and January's update as the committee.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I have another question to you, and I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
I need to, if, um, let's say that hypothetically, we said, let's try five months with the urgency ordinance. And, uh, and then when we read, if we bring something back like a non-urgency ordinance, could it be the same subject or does it have to be totally different?
I- if you mean you're, you're coming back with an ordinance that's fixing this or just unrelated to this completely?
Kind of the same, like, so for example, right now, we're talking about 10 months, but I'm, I'm saying like February 1st is five months away. And so Supervisor Savatia is asking for, uh, reports to, that specifies what we can and cannot do. So let's say we do the urgency ordinance that, that eliminates the early activation for now till February, and then at that time, we do realize we still need more time. What, what road can we take from that point forward if we need to move forward? Or is it, or is it not exist because we already?
Well, the extension period, and again, the, the statute sets out these, these periods of time. They're permissive periods of time. And it can be extended one more period of time for one year. But I, I, I think that you're going to find, and I can tell you just in terms of revamping this ordinance and streamlining this so that the use permit process is more effective, so that minor use permits actually can fulfill a vital role here for a lot of these cultivation sites. Because of the nature of the sites and what's been done on them before, to do all of that is going to take a little bit of time, particularly if your Board wants the community, you know, through workshops or whatever to be involved. Nothing would, these changes would improve the system, which has just, I think, been kind of confused and bogged down. And frankly, the zoning ordinance over the years has become a patchwork quilt. So this streamlining process is very important. The issue is always that you get into it and find that there may be more. So what you could do with this urgency ordinance, however, is if you, you come up with an ordinance that's going to resolve a portion of it, then your Board could look at the urgency ordinance and see whether in its present form it needs to remain at all. So in other words, if you had another ordinance in February that was going to address a lion's share of this, given the standards of 65858, you, you may find the conditions don't still exist. Not those conditions. There may be additional, different conditions. The 10 months is, is a benchmark because of the nature of zoning ordinances. The, the legislature's looking at what normally occurs when you're taking a zoning ordinance and revamping it because of its scope. And again, these are maximum times, but I, I, I don't see that the law allows you to say, well, we'll do three months and see how it goes. Yeah. And, but again, you, you could come up with corrective measures that would obviate the need to continue with that ordinance as written or that would shorten the time for you. So you have a lot of, you actually have a lot of flexibility. The 10 months, 15 days in this case, for this extension is what you can do. And if you need the time to develop the full panoply of ordinance changes, or if your Board decides, well, you know what, if we fix this, we're going to be X percent ahead, and that's a big deal, and we'll work on the other things. Until you get really into it, you don't know if there are multiple fixes necessary or just one. And unfortunately, I'm being vague because there's no way to answer that with specificity.
No, there's not, because you said that there's a, that the, the code or the law kind of specifies the 10 months anyhow.
Well, again, you can do less if, if your Board chooses to, but, but, uh, if you have the 10 months, I, I think from a legal perspective, you'd be much better taking the 10 months, 15 days and repealing it, rescinding it if you don't need it to be that long, you know, or any part of the ordinance you don't need to be that long. And, and certainly, things can happen much faster, but, um, streamlining the use permit process isn't, if that's all that needs to be done, you could, you could probably do that within a four, five, four months maybe, maybe less. But it depends upon how you want to revamp with the early activations in that process. So I, I do think that getting a report as to the, the planned approach so that, to make sure that before too much work is done, your Board is comfortable with, in other words, you wouldn't want a whole thing presented and then have you say, well, this isn't what we wanted. So, you, you know, it's, it's possible to sketch out a skeleton framework of the streamlined process for this. That's not difficult to do. And my office is ready and willing to help anytime you want us to.
You good Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, thank you, sorry.
Thank you very much for the response. And, um, believing that there is no more deliberation, looking for action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer, uh, the ordinance.
The ordinance has been offered. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Savatia?
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is, uh, 12:30 PM. Let's go ahead and, uh, do you guys mind if we keep going till 1 PM and then take a lunch? Okay, so let's go ahead and staff, is staff okay with that?
Uh, Johanna's the only one I'm going to check in with. Johanna, are you okay till 1?
Yes, I'm good.
Well, we're, we're used to it. She has something else to take care of.
So 6.6, 11:30 AM. Consideration of Agreement for Operational Analysis of Indigent Defense Services, and going back to CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Susan's going to give more detail on this, but I will say that what is before you today is the culmination of, of work that Susan and I have done over the last couple of years. As we think about the future of the Public Defender Program here in Lake County, I think you're all aware that the county is required to provide, uh, Public Defender Services for persons that are not able to, uh, provide that service for themselves. And, um, and so knowing that it was time to take a look at the operation of this program and make best decisions, we recently issued a request for proposals that got us to this point today. And so we have two of, uh, 6AC representatives here with us in the Zoom meeting, and Susan, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Good afternoon, Board. Administration brings this item forward for your consideration because we manage the indigent, indigent defense services contract. In the state of California, counties have been delegated the responsibility to provide and protect the Sixth Amendment, which ensures that no person accused of a crime goes to jail without first having the aid of a lawyer with the time, ability, and resources to present an effective defense as required under the United States Constitution. In order to determine our structure and processes best meet the national standards and the Sixth Amendment case law, and of course, state, local, and federal laws, we developed the RFQ seeking a subject matter expert who can provide an independent and objective evaluation focusing on three primary areas. The first area is the best practices to ensure the protection of the Sixth Amendment right. The second, uh, area is the, determine the appropriate compensation methodology for indigent defense contracts. And lastly, review the effectiveness and efficiency of the current structure and consider the feasibility of structural changes. The goal of this analysis is, is to discover the best model to provide effective, efficient, high-quality, ethical, and legal representation for criminal defendants who are unable to afford an attorney. Staff recommends approving the contract with the Sixth Amendment Center for $57,890,000. And I'm going to then now yield to the Board to ask questions of us three or us four.
Thank you very much, and I see we have, um, the Sixth Amendment Center, uh, on with us. Just wondering if they want to introduce themselves?
Thank you. Um, my name is David Carroll. I'm the Executive Director of the Sixth Amendment Center. I have been, uh, doing indigent defense technical assistance and evaluation in one form or another for over 25 years. The Sixth Amendment Center is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization. Uh, we do not get involved in litigation. We work with policymakers to assess their current systems and make recommendations for improvement if needed. With me here today is one of our lawyers that will be one of the leads on the project if approved, Aditi Goyle, and we're happy to take questions, if any.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the Board? I believe, um, and I'm wondering if staff might have some recollection of this, that there was an RFP done a while ago on, um, when, when was that RFP done? Uh, I want to say it was at least five years ago, seven years ago?
The RFP for, uh, services that are presently being carried out by the contractor we have in place was done, uh, probably four and a half years ago, Bruno.
Okay, four and a half.
Yeah, we were here, we were involved with that process.
And... Because it, it speaks of ensuring that people get their Sixth Amendment right. I, I, that, that obviously needs to, to happen, and I think is happening. Uh, I think that from what I'm seeing within the, um, the memo, it's an issue of, uh, costs and ensuring that it remains affordable and that the service is provided adequately. Did the RFP provide, uh, those variations, um, that level of specificity?
The RFP from four and a half years ago?
Yes.
Uh, did it, I, I'm trying to understand, did it, did it, um, request a variety of approaches?
Like what kind of level of service was, uh, offered and also the cost?
It, it was based on the model that had been in place before where it was operated under contract, and the attorneys that serve as the public defenders are subcontractors of a master contractor. And so we received two bids at that time. And since then, we have renewed the contract with the existing firm.
Right.
But it's, I, I don't know if, if in the history of forever, Lake County has taken a good look at, uh, best practices for this program. I'm looking at Anita because she knows the history of it more than I do.
Well, it was just a couple of years ago, Jeff Rhine did kind of an informal survey. And prior to that, I believe Admin some years ago looked at those options. Essentially, most counties in California exercise one of three. Either a public defender office, contracting with each attorney who's going to provide services individually, or the, the type of program that the county continues.
And I guess, and I, I mean no offense to, uh, 6AC. I, I am sure that your services are, uh, meet the expectations. But when there's only three potential options, um, I, I just don't know about spending another $60,000 to review those options. I know that, uh, granted, I only looked at one test case, which was Santa Cruz. I don't know- I don't know what the overall outcomes were, but I know that the cost ended up being the same, with potentially a little bit more cost based on the fact that now they had to have their own employee, and where were they going to place that employee. And I don't know if there was a change in the overall ethical standards or if there was a change in the service. That part I didn't receive, I wasn't able to find. And again, just being honest, that I haven't really been pleased with the past few consultant information that I've received, where it just seems like it's kind of obvious information. And just, I think that we can, there's, it's not a huge aspect, in my opinion, here that we can't figure out on our own, looking at just the three options. Because it's not like we would hire our own attorneys and be the employer of all of these public defenders. It would still be very similar. It would be a point person that may organize the private attorneys in order to meet the needs of public defenders. I just, I don't know... For the price, I don't, I just don't know. That's my only drawback. I think that we do need to figure out to make sure that it's the best of what we're doing. But I don't know that spending $60,000 on a consultant to let us know how best to move about this is the direction that I feel comfortable with going.
And in response to that, one of the three options is definitely having county staff that operate it. So I wouldn't assume that that would not be the model that is right for Lake County. I mean, maybe it would, maybe it wouldn't. But the models are typically county staff with a public defender department head. That's over the attorneys that report to that department head. Or a contract model like we have, or kind of a hybrid model, where you have a point person in the county that is the one that assigns subcontractor attorneys.
And seeing the difficulties that we have already filling positions over in the district attorney's office and just the workload that that would require, I would say that brings it down already, in my opinion, down to two potential possibilities. Because hiring all of those people under our name just seems like a real difficult task. I just, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know that that's necessarily true Supervisor. I don't want to disagree with you, but I think we are starting to see recruitment outcomes with the attorney positions. But again, I don't know that anyone is leaning toward that model more than the others. It's just an opportunity to look at this program, which is a longstanding mandate, high-cost program, has the potential for costs to go off the rails. They have, to some extent, in the past. We've been pleased with the contractor we have in place now, but just feel strongly that it's time to take a look at this program. And we might want to see if David had a response to... If you could give some more information on what work you'll actually be doing here in the county?
Sure. So whenever we get involved with the jurisdiction, the first thing we want to do is do an assessment of what is, see if you are currently meeting what is required of you under the US Constitution and state and local ordinances and statutes. And then if it's true that you're meeting your constitutional obligation, we then will make assessments about, is there efficiencies to be had in how you're delivering services? Are there different ways to think about how you're doing it or doing it better? And we would make those recommendations. We did just do this in Santa Cruz. People are interested in sort of looking at the quality and detail in which we go in and recommending how they should change their system. But it is kind of hard for us right now to talk with any specificity since we don't know your system at all. And we haven't begun to evaluate it. But what I will say is that we, our philosophy is that there is no single cookie cutter model that can be exported from somewhere else. Every indigent defense system must be jurisdictional specific about where cases arise from, where, how courts are structured, where they are. So we don't have a preference for either a staffed public defender or a contract model, or even an assigned counsel private rate model. We always make our recommendations based on the specificities of the county or jurisdiction that we're looking at.
Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions? Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Anyone from the public have a comment on this item? Both the Zoom room and the boardroom. And seeing none, let's bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement for operational analysis of indigent defendant services.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Scott. Roll call please, Johanna.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Nay.
Thank you.
Okay, we are at our 12:00 PM. I don't think I want to get that one started. I think it's going to take a little bit longer. I'm wondering if we might be able to get 8.2? Do you know if Director Ewing?
That might take a few minutes as well. Matthew, you can hear me. How long do you think for that item, Matthew?
It really depends on any questions your board has. But, you know, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 minutes is reasonable for the presentation, plus whatever time for questions.
Mr. Chair, I also might suggest that you go back into closed session for continued discussion of 8.3.
Okay. So let's go ahead. We're gonna come back to public session at... Let's just say 2:15, just in case.
That's more than enough time.
Okay, so 2:15, we will be back. And right now, we are going to go into closed session. And again, 8.3, Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B, 1A, Appointment of Community Development Director. And with that, we will go into closed session and see you again at 2:15 PM. Thank you. All right, we're going to get started with 6.7, our 12:00 PM item. Presentation of Roadmap Task Force Pilot Project. If Matthew can please go ahead and share the screen with the presentation. Supervisor Pyska and myself will share the presentation. And I do want to thank all staff, and I'll go ahead and name them during the presentation, or one of us will name them. Want to thank staff for all the work provided to get to us to this situation of presenting to the Board, what is the plan with the Roadmap Task Force? And let's go ahead and go to the next slide, please, and let's get started. And if we can turn off the lights, please, for ambiance. Thank you. And so as you recollect, I just wanted to give a brief summary. On April 16, 2021, as we usually do every year, we have a board workshop. During that workshop, it was decided and directed to staff to go ahead and start working on the Roadmap Task Force based on a suggestion of enhanced code enforcement and community revitalization. Our first meeting that we got together for was on June 18, 2021. And we've been meeting fairly regularly, I want to say, at least once a month, sometimes a little bit more often. And it consists of animal control, code enforcement, law enforcement, administration, Supervisor Pyska, myself, an invitation to the district attorney has been sent out, as we believe that the district attorney has the ability to help us make sure that we succeed in other ways as well. Next.
What is it? It's a focused community revitalization. We'll learn from the past, learn from law enforcement, code enforcement, North Shore Task Force. The goals that we've worked on are to decrease blight, decrease abandoned vehicles, decrease crime, and decrease crime. Increasing community safety, increase our quality of life, and stimulate economic growth.
And I'm sure that you're all very well aware of what was going on in the North Shore Task Force between the Sheriff's Department and code enforcement. We didn't want to start anything from scratch and reinvent the wheel, so we wanted to learn from what they had already done. But we did want to add a whole lot more to their scope, as we think that was an important part of it, but we want to expand on what they were doing. Next, please. So then, we were tasked with choosing a community. Some of the criteria that we created, preferred if the community had a municipal advisory committee, preferred if a community was an entry point into the county to start the positive experience, no matter which direction people are coming into the county. And then also, we wanted to review data for which communities needed that focused attention for the greatest impact. Next.
What is needed to be successful? So we looked, we had a lot of conversations. We dug into this really deeply. And we decided that two law enforcement officers, one sergeant, one deputy, two code enforcement officers, animal control believes they can handle the increase with current staffing, support and participation from our local municipal advisory council and the surrounding stakeholders, and then develop an action plan.
Then measures of success. And this is still a work in progress, but we want to make sure that we have the ability to know and judge whether or not we have been successful with the mission that we're taking on. And so we wanted to obtain baseline data of code violations, crime statistics, and animal control reports. At minimum, have an annual review with the Board of Supervisors to update on the task force and its progress. And we want to create a timeline that's going to be a viable timeline for success. We don't believe that in a single year, we can do the changes and the impact that we want to make. So we do believe that in two years, we would be able to find ways to reduce the baseline data, hence increasing the quality of life and making a safer community. Next, please.
So the first, we're starting with a pilot project. The first recommended community will be a pilot project. And the success may lead to other recommended communities in the future. Proposed positions for task force will remain with those communities. This will ensure that the changes made will not digress. If the pilot is successful and approved for expansion, new positions may be proposed for next community that is recommended. So the idea is, if this is successful, we leave those staff in place in that community, and we expand to the next community, making new hires for new code enforcement, new law enforcement, so that we don't ever walk away from the work that we're doing.
Yeah, the idea was to create permanent change, not do a cleanup, as we all have experienced. Where you clean up, it feels good, you walk away, you come back a month or two later, and you have to start cleaning up again. And the adding of additional staff for future projects is a possibility, depending on, is the need there, is the need not there? Depends on if the next project is going to be adjacent to the one that we started with, or if it's going to be on a complete polar opposite side of the county, which at that point would probably require more. Next, please. So also, we talked about the revitalization of substations. Sheriff's substations still exist around the lake and are not as prominent or utilized as they could be due to staffing. This project will help to bring law enforcement and code enforcement permanently into our communities. This will create faster response time and constant eyes on the community. And that right there, those last two, I think, are some of the most important reasons as to why that change will be permanent. We know that if we have law enforcement traveling through our communities, that people are less likely to do the things that they wouldn't do if they never saw law enforcement or code enforcement driving around. So we want that presence.
Okay, here's our big reveal. The committee recommends this community. Clear Lake Oaks.
And again, it's an entry point into our community and that we feel that we can make an impact and make that change. And if we can move forward, we can see the map as to what the area of focus will be. Because Clear Lake Oaks does kind of cover multiple communities, and we wanted to make sure to make it a community that was within our capacity to make the change, rather than making it too large of a scope. And so basically, from the water tower on the east side that has the beautiful mural on it, all the way to Sulfur Bank Road and holding on to all of the keys and some of the surrounding areas off of the highway, making that community be our main focus. At least, that is our recommendation to the Board. And I believe that we have a budget for the next one.
So our draft budget, which is also still a work in progress, for salaries, we'll have $325,610. For nuisance abatement, it'll be just over $400,000. Services and supplies, $46,974. For a total of $77,584. And the funds come from the cannabis tax budget unit 1072.
And so then, once a community has been approved by this Board, so we can move forward, these are the next steps to consider. Consider proposed budget on September 14. Right now, it is still a draft budget, but it will be provided to us on September 14 when we go over the entirety of the budget. Recruit, to start recruiting to fill those positions that have been allocated for this task force. Replace Supervisor Pyska with Supervisor Crandall to continue work on the committee. It doesn't make sense to have two supervisors on the committee that does not hold that community in their district. So we discussed it, and Supervisor Pyska has cordially offered to step down and let Supervisor Crandall come in. We need to start drafting an action plan so that we're ready to start moving forward with an actual process and strategy, and then start engaging with the municipal...
Advisory councils.
Council, not committee, but council and local stakeholders to get the participation of the community themselves. And so this can be businesses, this can be community members. But we know that the municipality, goodness gracious.
Municipal advisory council.
Municipal advisory council is going to be the focal point of most of the communities, because people know that that's where you go if you have concerns or if you want to see change in your community. And so we want to make sure to be engaged with them as much as possible. I believe that's the last slide. Yep. Any questions? Thank you, Sam. Supervisor Scott.
That budget, is that budget for just one year? Or is that the two-year budget?
That is a single-year budget, yes.
And then are you thinking that going in there and revitalize the community, it'll start paying for itself when we start getting the proper taxes from the houses that aren't? Are we going in that direction, or are we just...
So we will be reviewing the administrative fines. That will be coming back to us, and I think that will be a vital point of recouping some of the funds. I think the other side is, we need to focus on what is the actual long-term goal? The long-term goal is to agitate the economy in the area. If you create a safer environment and a safer community, it's going to make it more interesting and intriguing for investors to want to come in and commit their dollars to that community. And so I would suspect that we will see some increases. I don't know that it will be a perfect wash of that, but I think that just the quality of life and everything else is what the people in all areas, granted, we can only start at one area, or I feel we can only start in one area, that everybody deserves.
No, and don't get me wrong, I'm really excited about this, and I'm really excited for Supervisor Crandall, because this is in his district. I couldn't remember, are we working with the tax collector on this? So maybe we can also focus on, you know, houses that aren't paying their taxes, if we can get those back on the rules? Is she involved, or?
I think that there's a lot of other options and opportunities. I think even looking at roads, because that's part of the area. And I'm going to say something, and I think it's going to come out perfectly right. When I travel through Lake County and I come over the mountain of, over Santa Elena, and I go through Middletown, that's how I want every sing... I don't want it to look exactly the same. I know we all have our own views and our own feel and atmosphere. But when I go through Middletown, that's the level of experience. I want to see the flags hanging from the posts to really show that there's a vibrant commercial community in the area. I want to see the beautiful park. I want to see, going down Highway 29 in Middletown is a scenic route, and it, going by the New Hardesters, that's what we need to see. We need to see that level of vibrancy everywhere when you enter into our community. And slowly, we need to build, build, build inside to eventually have every single one of our communities look like that.
No, and I agree with that. And I think along with that, we build safety. Because people are more engaged in their community. We don't have the garbage, people aren't willing to dump the garbage. Our kids are safer on the street. So I'm really excited for this project and definitely support it.
Yeah, and one other thing about the budget. You know, a lot of that cost is staffing. And we are trying to grow this staffing. That's part of our strategy. And ultimately, we want deputies in every community. And ultimately, we want, we want deputies in every community. And ultimately, we want a code enforcement officer responsible for every district. So, this is incrementally how we reach those goals. So, it does seem, you know, if you look at the budget, it's a lot, but those are already embedded in our other priorities.
Now, is there a substation in that area already? I don't.
So, what we did is we looked at the Lucerne substation, which is within reach of that community already, that would decrease the time for response for those that are getting calls from Clear Lake Oaks area.
But that would help out both communities, that having.
Oh, thank you. I'm ecstatic about this, thank you very much. I think too, that it helps that the, the East Region Town Hall Committee will have some, because they've actually, in that town, actually, all of my town councils have been getting a lot of activity lately and so, and it's revolving around what we're talking about as it is. There's been some folks that have been in the county for quite some time that brought something forward that took place in 2004, but then it dissolved and went away like you mentioned and so, it's perfect that you're stating that you want to try and ensure that things like this, if it works, it stays, you know, that type of thing. So, that, that's going to be, make a big difference. So, I'm just really excited about this and I know that they'll be excited too and I'm pretty sure I can mention this to them tomorrow when we have our town hall in Clear Lake Oaks.
And I will add one thing, we do want dedicated staff, but just because somebody is hired in that dedicated position, doesn't mean they can't move on up to other positions. We just want to make sure to have the allocated positions that we can keep full as much as we can for, so that those communities can have the service, the required service.
And there's one other part that we talked about, it's just a little bit alluded to in the presentation, but the, the opportunity for a partnership with some of the private industry and stakeholders in the community and maybe developing, working with them to help them develop a grant program for, you know, assisting with facade sprucing up or paint. And so, I have reached out to, and I'll pass that information along to, to some of the big, bigger business owners who are really interested in, in investing in their community that way.
For uniformity and whatnot, what the businesses.
Um, less about uniformity, but just about, you know, a fresh coat of paint, ambiance.
Right, right.
Curb appeal.
Curb appeal, all of those things that, the, the big stakeholders, you know, they, they want that community cleaned up just as much as everybody else.
Because they benefit from that economic vibrancy as well. Supervisor Scott.
Yeah, you know, thank you for the hard work of the committee and, you know, all of our staff that helped put it together and I appreciate that you didn't reinvent the wheel, but, you know, I did have, you know, just some of the same questions as Supervisor Scott, that, you know, how are we going to sustain this over a multi-year period? And I think, I would assume what you're doing is obviously, this entails everything else that we're doing with county. Obviously, we are working on everything with, you know, we made a big step last year with our workforce and hopefully, we're going to start to see those improvements. So, hopefully, as we go forward with the, the task force, we're going to be bringing money into our workforce that allows us to have those people available, so it's not a, you know, an offset all the time, you know, that we already have those extra staff people hired in the sheriff's office, code enforcement, and then they're just assigned to the areas. That's the long-term goal, right? How we're going to keep doing that? Okay, just want to make sure. And then, yeah, revitalizing, you put it up there, response time, one of the biggest ones that we always deal with, especially depending what end of the county you're on in our enforcement. So, I appreciate it, you know, very happy that it started in the Clear Lake Oaks area up there, you know, but this will be something that we're going to grow, as you said, to, for the entire county to keep moving forward. So, I'll support it and good job, good job, committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's no further comments, let's go ahead and go to the public comments and so, please come on up to the microphone. We have a comment in the boardroom and we will get to the Zoom room once we're done in the boardroom.
Joan Moss, I live on Cobb Mountain and for about six months to a year, there's been an abandoned vehicle and where I walk, a three-mile walk. And then, there was another abandoned vehicle. And then, they moved the first abandoned vehicle to the middle of the road. And I talked with code enforcement just two weeks ago and he promised me he'd take care of it and he did.
And Joan, this sounds.
I went and thanked him for it. You said it was code enforcement, so I'm just commenting that it worked. I'm just commenting that code enforcement worked.
Thank you.
And I went to thank him. Thank you.
Thank you. Wasn't seeing the connection, thank you for making the connection. And so, let's go ahead and open up for the Zoom room. I see that we have Director Metcalf.
Yes, I'm a little video challenged, but I just wanted to remind the board that the county already does have a presence in Clear Lake Oaks and I'm very excited about this because Bay Area Services has a peer sports center there at the Big Oak Shopping Center. So, whatever we can do to help move this along, please let, let us know.
Absolutely, thank you for the reminder. We are looking to work with every and any stakeholder within the county and outside of the, within the county departments and outside of the county departments as well. So, but again, appreciate the reminder and the comment. And next, we have Betsy Khan. Please provide your full name, which I think I got right, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Board. This is Betsy Khan. I'd like to just give you a little laundry list of things that could help that I think you should consider. The first one is empowering the municipal advisory council to update the shoreline area plan, which is really weird. Then, implement the community wildfire protection plan, establish the hazardous vegetation management priorities, which is already being done by Clerk and the Resource Conservation District. Consider them to upgrade the fire protection water services there. Identify emergency management capacity building to develop community lifelines that are called for in the national response framework from FEMA and then develop firewise communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. And that is all the hands that I see both in the boardroom and the Zoom room. So, bringing it back to the board, and I don't, don't believe we need an actual motion for this today unless Supervisor Crandall feels the need to celebrate with a motion, but I think direction is good enough.
And you may want to do it to make it stick.
Okay, yes. So, I will motion to approve the implementation of the Row Mac Task Force Pilot Project Action Plan in Clear Lake Oaks.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and a second by Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sebastian.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think you were going to announce action out of closed session at the start of the meeting and this was such an exciting agenda item, we just rolled with it.
I did just roll.
So, would you like to?
Is there any action out of closed session?
Yes, there was. I would like to make a motion to appoint Mary Darby as Community Development Director effective October 4th, 2021 at step three on the Lake County salary scale.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and a second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please, Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sebastian.
Yes.
And what is her name again?
Mary Darby.
There's a press release coming out right now.
Shortly.
Shortly.
Thank you very much for the reminder, that was an important one. I apologize for missing it. I will move on.
We did it in three minutes.
Sorry, Eddie, you talked too long.
So, our last public item is 7.2. A, consideration of a presentation on PG&E's Better Together Resilient Communities Grant Program. And B, consideration of a resolution of support for Trane Technologies to submit an application on behalf of the county of Lake to PG&E's Better Together Resilient Communities Grant Program in pursuit of funds for additional engineering and due diligence in the evaluation of potential advanced energy projects. Director Ewing.
All right, good afternoon, Board. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director, and Matthew Rothstein is co-presenting this with me along with some representatives of Trane who I think either should be on or should be on soon. So, last month, your, your board may recall that you approved a no-cost contract with Trane to investigate a variety of potential energy savings measures to county-owned buildings. Trane's work is underway right now on, on the component of that contract for preliminary energy audit for county buildings. There's an additional component of their scope of work and in general, they have it broken up into, into two areas, the, the traditional energy savings measures for, for existing buildings and then an advanced energy, energy projects phase or, or approach. So, they are looking at advanced energy projects as a means to generate potential county revenue, provide power resiliency or further statewide climate goals. The impacts of these type of projects generally extend beyond the county buildings to kind of the community surrounding the project location and, and that's, that's why Matthew is here from, from the administrative office, because they've, they've been directly involved in that, that aspect of that. Also, if there are any advanced energy projects that might include infrastructure from other departments or even other agencies outside of the county, those departments or agencies are consulted and included. So, last week, Trane presented to Public Services, the county administrative office, as well as Special District, a grant opportunity through PG&E that, that may, may be able to fund a feasibility study of a couple of advanced energy projects that Trane felt may prove viable. And before I hand things over to, to Trane and you can, you can see Doug Walker, Michael Day on, and I'll, I'll hand it over here briefly to them, actually, to Matthew and that's one of the, to make sure that Matthew has an opportunity to, to touch on a couple of things. One is some other entities that are expected to apply for this grant and, and also touch on a change, a recommended change to the resolution that was included in the agenda packet, as well as any other comments that, that he has. So, Matthew, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you very much, Director Ewing. This is Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. As your board is aware, Public Services, Buildings and Ground Staff and the Special District's Administration Team have long been proactive in addressing energy consumption surrounding things like lighting and water usage. And under the Energy Savings Performance Contracting Model, savings generated from upgrades to items such as those are typically used to fund larger energy products such as solar panels and battery storage. So, because Lake County has already undertaken these upgrades, I want to reiterate Director Ewing's point, that Trane has invested a great deal of focus in advanced energy projects that can be expected to provide energy resiliency. And that's resiliency both for planned power, public safety power shut-off events and outages that may occur due to emergencies such as wildfires. And also, they're looking at advanced energy projects that can potentially bring county revenue. Your board has previously met Michael Day from the Trane Company and he's here today to present information on a grant opportunity through PG&E's Better Together Resilient Community Program and Better Together Resilient Communities Program. And Douglas Walker is also present. He's replacing Reggie Ingram, who you may have seen before, was long-served as the primary contact for the county. And Doug has been with Trane for more than two decades and has over three decades of experience in the energy space. We're very pleased to have Doug with us today. If the proposed grant application is awarded, the $100,000 Better Together Grant would be used to fund work on feasibility studies by Trane and their subcontractors. And Trane indicates that your board, by electing to submit this application, that would not obligate the county for any other additional spending outside of the funds awarded by the grant at this particular step today. And in other words, if the grant's awarded, the expectation is that your board will act to convey those funds to Trane to support the work described in the grant application. And Michael and Doug will speak more to that in a moment. And you'll also recall from the memo that there are multiple Lake County entities that are expected to apply for this program. One of those is Hidden Valley Lake Community Services District and another is the, another is Clerk. And Clerk is actually going to be applying for that program with a letter of support from, from the Community Risk Reduction Authority. We wanted to reassure your board, there's no conflict there, there's no requirement that, you know, board-related entities support only one application in this process. But I also wanted to draw your attention to a change to the resolution that was attached to the board item that occurred in the time since your agenda was posted. So, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen now so you can see that. So, the, the red text there, this is the fourth whereas on page two of the attachment, it says, whereas Trane will complete additional feasibility analysis on the potential projects at no additional cost to the county of Lake, with the exception that if the Better Together Resilient Communities Grant Application is successful in securing funds, Trane will be compensated for its services to complete the work described in the grant application pursuant to a written agreement to be entered between Trane and the county in an amount no greater than the maximum payable in that agreement. So, just wanted to make sure that your board was aware of that change as we move into this item. And so, I wanted to just also give many thanks to Director Ewing and County Council and need a grant for your partnership in developing that slightly modified language at a late stage, just to make sure that we're able to move forward. And also, at this stage now, we, the staff recommends that you receive the report from Trane. Again, Michael Day and Doug are here. And should you determine that you wish to authorize Trane to apply for the Better Together Program on the county's behalf, staff additionally recommends that you adopt the proposed resolution as now drafted with the change we just presented. And Director Ewing, Special District's Administrator Scott Harder and I are all, we are all going to be here to answer your questions if needed as well. And now, I'll turn this presentation over to Michael Day and Douglas Walker of Trane. Thank you, Michael and Doug, for being here today.
Absolutely, and thank you. That was a, a wonderful overview of exactly what we're going to be going through here. And so, Michael, if you want to go to the, the second slide, then I'm going to kind of toss it your way, but as just explained, we're, we're doing kind of twofold. We're looking at advanced energy and we're also looking at traditional energy savings and seeing where the two of them can marry together. The thing that, that we want to talk about today is the fact that there's timing issues with trying to go for some of these grants. And because of the timing issues, it's pushed us to where we needed to chat with you today. So, we will be talking about this grant that is available and with that, I think, Michael, I'm just going to head, head your way and let you go through it.
And hopefully, you can hear me now. All right, thanks, Doug. And thanks, everybody, especially thanks go out to, to Director Ewing and to County Council. This has come up rather quickly and they've been pretty nimble at, at being able to respond to this. The first grant application we're talking about, the one for today, actually, the grant window closes today, so we have a couple hours to spin it. And that is the Better Together Grant and it's the first of many that are, that are available here. But these are really the, the ones that are, that are first, that are coming up the, the fastest and we'll, we'll talk about the process a little bit later. But the, the question might be, what are we, what are we going for? And really, this is the, this is a very simplified version of what the system is that we're looking for. And this would be in the North Lakeport area without getting too specific. We haven't acquired any of the properties yet or the, the rights to the properties that we'd need. But basically, we'd be looking to add additional photovoltaic panels to the ones that are already in the, in the ground there at the wastewater treatment plant near the jail, near animal control. The power from the pumps or from the PV would go to water pumps that would move the water up a new pipeline to a, to an elevated location where we put a, a new water tank. Then, later in the day, the water from the tank would run down the pipeline through a hydroelectric turbine and generate electricity going out to the grid. The water would go down to a lower tank, so it's, it's a closed loop system in that it goes from tank to tank and it doesn't really have any evaporation, so once you fill it up, that's about it. This process, this project overall would be, as envisioned, would be paid for by an investor under a public-private partnership. And they would have the tax equity from the, from the installation and sales to utilities. And those two things would pay them back. And those two things would pay them back for their investment on this. The benefits, as Assistant CIO Rothstein mentioned, were that we would have power resilience in this location, we would have wildfire resilience. We're talking about something on the order of about 45 million gallons. And so the pipeline itself can be studded with hydrants. We can connect this into fire mains for emergency water supply, and do other things like have emergency rapid refill stations for water tankers. So it really is a pretty significant wildfire resilience element. And because it has co-located renewables and storage, we're designing this around a 96-hour duration with no outside power for the microgrid, at least for the one in the Lakeport area. The project in Middletown's a little bit different, but the idea is basically the same. Use water running down the hill to turn a turbine, generate electricity, and generate a new county revenue stream that can be used for other purposes. The tanks serve multiple uses. So this is actually a design for Hidden Valley Lake. And in this, they'd have 35 million gallon tank overall, where 20 million gallons would be going up and down the hill on a daily basis. 10 million gallons would be there so that the tank can sell what are called ancillary services, where they're in standby to provide power. You don't get paid a lot, but you get paid every hour out of the year, and you're very rarely called. But it doesn't cost much to have a slightly larger tank and to have the water in there waiting. And then there's 5 million gallons that, no matter what, is never touched in energy operations, that's always there for firefighting. In reality, it should be 15 million gallons. You're only talking about seven or eight times a year that the 10 million gallons for ancillary services is ever touched. And so that is how one tank can actually provide multiple services to the community. So for North Lakeport, this is what's called the Critical Facility Microgrid. So instead of trying to take on the entire community, it takes on a number of critical loads. And you have a big cluster of critical loads here. So you've got the Northwest Wastewater Treatment Plant, Animal Control, you have the jail, and the Sheriff's Dispatch Office, County Emergency Operations Center, National Guard Umbray, and Sutter Lakeside Hospital. And we actually have received a letter of support and interest from Sutter Lakeside, that their hospital would be interested in joining this microgrid. And they provided us a nice letter of support to go along with the application. The initial technical review on this looks pretty good, but the project needs more work on feasibility to really make sure that there aren't any red flags, there aren't any things that we haven't seen so far that could potentially derail the project. And the nice part is, is that this grant, the Better Together Grant, can pay for a feasibility study, or at least the start of a fuller feasibility study. The second project is in Middletown, and this is a rather unique project in that it is not a new generation project, but what it really is, is it's called energy recovery. So there's an existing pipeline, as most of you will know, that's the Southeast Geyser Effluent Pipeline, where 6,000 gallons per minute comes from the wastewater treatment plants around Bear Lake and is pumped over to the geysers. Well, it flows down a large existing pipeline, and from the peak of the system in the Hastings Creek watershed, it flows down about 600 feet. Well, if you've got 6,000 gallons per minute and 600 feet of drop, you have enough to power about a 500 to 600 KW turbine every hour out of the day. And what that does is it just recovers some of the energy that went into pumping the water up. That's why it's called an energy recovery installation. But that would allow generation in the Middletown area. One of the things that's really interesting is that even though we need to have steady state water flow coming out of the Middletown wastewater treatment plant area to Bear Creek and to be pumped to the geysers, there's an opportunity to put a much larger tank on the pipeline, which would allow more than 500 KW to be generated at once. It would allow it to be segregated by time and to have a much higher power output. And that could feed a microgrid in the Middletown area, particularly for the areas that are HFTV-1 and are close to the substation. Again, the initial technical review on this looks pretty good, but the project needs more work on feasibility. The reason that we're so focused on grants is this. This is actually something that was developed for Hidden Valley Lake, but your projects are very similar, particularly Lakeport. If you look at what a 10-megawatt asset could do, it can generate a little over $3 million a year in terms of its output. But of that $3 million, a big part of it, the single largest element, is what's called capacity sales. The problem is, is that capacity sales are currently very difficult, if not impossible, to make happen, because there are some logjams at the California Independent System Operator with approving new assets to sell capacity into the market. So until that logjam gets cleared up, we can't count in the pro forma on there being capacity sales. What that ends up meaning is that takes out about 80% of the profit for the investor. So in lieu of capacity sales, we need to have some grants come in to buy down the cost of the project, so the investors can get the return that they're looking for. The good news is, there are a lot of grants out there, there are more grants coming. So we have the Build Back Better Challenge, that's the big one coming up. That's due on October 19th. It's actually a two-stage grant. So the first stage, which is the application's due on October 19th, will give another half million dollars for engineering and feasibility studies, which is a pretty fair bit of money. They decide on that, supposedly the first week of December, will get notice on whether we get that award or not. And they're expecting 50 to 60 communities across the United States to be awarded these Phase 1 Challenge Grants. Out of those 50 to 60 awardees, they'll be invited to submit, using those dollars that they were awarded for engineering, to submit a Phase 2 Build Back Better Challenge Grant. That Build Back Better Challenge Grant totals up to $100 million to be granted to local communities. So that's the big thing that we're building towards. If we are able to get that, these projects can happen, and we can do a lot of good in Lake County. There are also other grants. There's a Community Microgrid Enablement Program, which we've been working with PG&E on. It's really helpful folks from PG&E, helping us get access to data sets that we normally wouldn't have access to. There's a Microgrid Incentive Program that's coming up next year, and we've been participating in the workshops about how the MIP will be structured. It's received $200 million from the PUC, and it can grant up to $15 million at a time. But that program is still under development. And there are also some additional programs and grant opportunities that we're fully expecting to see come out of both state and federal government. And on those, hopefully, we'll have enough time like we have for Build Back Better, where we've got eight or 10 weeks to look at it, instead of trying to squeeze it into two or three. But we're really trying to take a crack at all of the grant opportunities for Lake County where these types of solutions fit. And with that, Doug, what about the path forward?
Yeah, so today, we are asking for approval for us to submit the application on the Better Together Grant application that's before you. What will be coming up next, again, we'll be back in a few weeks to present on the Build Back Better application. Today, again, Better Together Resilient Communities Grant Program coming up, the Build Back Better Application. With that, we come back to you, there is different financial obligations in submitting for that grant. And again, we're working with staff right now through all of those to fully understand what those obligations would be. So with that, I think we'll pass that back over to staff and for any questions that are coming our way.
All right, thank you, Doug. If you could stop you or whoever is sharing the screen, I appreciate the presentation. Obviously, a lot of information there, not all of it is applicable to this specific grant application. I know Michael is excited about this and wants to share information. But I think it's important to understand that, you know, that at this point, we're not talking about a commitment of the counties, we're talking about a grant application, and a lot of, if we get the grant, Train would be under a future agreement, they would be the contractor to do the feasibility study. And then the next steps from there actually goes right in line with the energy contract that we're pursuing, ultimately leading to an investment-grade audit, a lot of which, at least on the advanced energy side, this grant would help pay for work that may have otherwise needed to be done, and factored into the long-term cost of this project. So at this point, turn it over to the board for any questions and consideration. Ultimately, there is the A and the B. So the presentation is there, and I'll just wrap it up there and turn it over to the board.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for the presentation, and also for the agenda item. Are there any questions or comments from board members? I think what's exciting is that there's other opportunities that we're not quite certain of that may be coming to us, such as the infrastructure programs that are being discussed at the federal government. In my opinion, these feasibility studies put us in the best of positions to be able to access those funds versus not having the feasibility study and not having something that's ready to go that we know is going to be viable here in the community. I know that the programs that are being suggested and commented on today, I think those are exactly the types of programs we need to be looking for in the future. We can't wait for PG&E to do something that's going to put us in a better position. And even if they do, it's going to be mainly for their benefit, not for ours. And here, this is absolutely to our benefit when it comes to the firewise stuff, as well as the electrical grid stuff. So I appreciate you bringing this to us, and I'll keep my fingers crossed that this gets approved, and that we also get approved at the grant level. And with that, Supervisor Simon.
Yeah. Director Lars, thank you for bringing this. And also, Matthew, thank you very much for the presentation. And, you know, appreciate the call and everything. As is said in there, the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority know that there are other agencies that will be going for this, and we have written the support letter. And we did our due diligence, just as Matthew said, where we could support both. Bringing any dollars into the county is very important. But I do, I'm excited about the opportunities, too, that we're talking about today. And I just want to, you know, put it on record here that, you know, it's great that we're going for the grant, but I don't want us to miss out on the opportunity, if another agency in the county gets it, that we don't move forward with this. So I'd really like to just pose a question to the ARP funds, that is for infrastructure and opportunities. So what I'm saying is, if we apply for this, we don't get it, we want to keep moving forward and look at an opportunity where we do fund it. It's great that we're trying to use grant funds, but we have in our hand right now the opportunity through the ARP funds to fund some of this stuff, too. So the ARP Committee, I just want to put that out there, at least have the conversations and bring it back, because everything they're talking about is exactly where we need to go in Lake County for our future. So I just want to put that on record, I am in support of this today. And I will say that the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, we meet every third Monday of the month, and we're really trying to collaborate. So if there's anything with grants or anything, Lars, or anyone on there, you know, the meeting is open. We're trying to get a best-fits grant, too, so we're always thinking, so we're not competing against each other. And by next year, hopefully, everything's in line, and we'll just keep moving that forward. It is something new, we have just started with the NCO coming onboard, to make sure that we bring all the funds into Lake County that we can. But I really want to stress the opportunity for infrastructure, and that's exactly what we're talking about here with the ARP funds, that we don't miss that opportunity to have shovel-ready projects as these other funds are coming down. So that's it, but I am in support.
I appreciate you saying that. I don't know that the North Lakeport one fits within, but definitely the one in Middletown, because I know it talked about sewer and water, not sure if it extends into all other infrastructure. But absolutely, I think there's alternative ways to making sure we keep moving forward, rather than thinking it's a good project and watching it be shelved and waiting for future opportunities. So absolutely agree with you on that.
And I just want to say, you don't know if it's not ready if you don't ask the question. So continue to push the bounds on those. When they're talking about infrastructure and building back better, you know, the ARP funds, you know, I think are available for that. You know, this is infrastructure. When we talk about infrastructure, it could mean all types of different infrastructure. So I'd say, if we're not successful on the grant, that we don't miss this opportunity.
Got it. Loud and clear. Where exactly is the Middletown project?
So the existing Southeast Geyser Effluent Pipeline goes from Lower Lake, it passes about two miles to the west, a little over two miles to the west of Hidden Valley Lake, and then pretty much due south into Middletown. It has an existing pipeline. The pumps are in Lower Lake, they push it up to the crest of the hills, again, just west of Hidden Valley Lake. And at the crest right now, there's a tank, about a 250,000-gallon tank. So the pumps from Lower Lake pump the water up to that tank, and then it gravity feeds down into Middletown to the wastewater treatment plant, and then pumps take it from there over to Bear Creek Canyon, and from there over to the geysers. What we'd be looking to do is to utilize that existing water flow that's already happening, and that existing water, that effluent pipeline that's already there, and to try and harvest, recover some of the energy that's being put into moving that water up to the crest of the hills as it falls down. That's sort of the minimum. The maximum would be increasing the amount of water storage at the crest, at the Hastings Creek watershed, and allowing more water to flow down at once, so it could power, on a temporary basis, a larger turbine. And that would give us more power output to feed into the area there in Middletown.
Thank you for that. One of the critical needs for a lot of these areas is access to water for the helicopter. The new Firehawk, if it could connect to a water tank, it would be really helpful, so I don't have to go further to the lakes.
Well, funny you say that, but in these grants, what we're looking to do is to put in something that looks sort of like a swimming pool. And it's called a dip tank, and it can be flooded, it's normally dry, but it can be flooded with the water. And that would allow the helicopters, whether it's the Firehawk with their hose pulling it up, or whether it's the actual bucket, to go into it. We also look at putting hydrants on the pipeline, that would be more for the North Lakeport installation, where we'd have hydrants on the pipeline itself, so that it doesn't just convey the water, but it can be the base of firefighting over the area that it traverses. And the last thing is, is that in addition to being able to tie it into the town's firemain system, we also look to have a multi-lane, what we call a toll booth, which would allow rapid refilling of multiple water tankers at once, so that we can really use that water and get it out quickly to help be an integrated part of the firefighting. Because again, these are firefighting resources first, that just happen to have an energy component that helps pay for them and other things.
And I know that South Lake Fire Protection District is looking at some grants to build water storage tanks in these areas, and so that could be another avenue of collaboration.
Thank you very much. Any further comments from the board before we open it up for the public? All right, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments from anyone in the Zoom room or the board chambers? I see one hand up, we got Jonathan Braniff. Please provide your full name, and you have three minutes.
Hello there, my name is Jonathan Braniff, and congratulations to the Train team for all the work that you've done. And thank you to the Board of Supervisors for allowing us to present. Much like what Train has been doing and applying with PG&E's Better Together Resilience Campaign, we want to invite the Board of Supervisors to consider approving a resolution for a forthcoming meeting that would allow the county, the Pomo Native American community, the University of San Francisco, and our company Block Junction to sign off on an MOU, which would tie into a non-binding and non-matching funding grant, much like what we're talking about here. And I commend the team here for the work that you're doing, and this is really important, particularly- particularly with the Better Together Campaign and all the various initiatives that are going on right now to reinvest into communities. So this is very, very important work, so I commend you all in that. We would be actively going after a grant, much like the group here today is talking about, which would be for a million dollars through the Department of Commerce, for a transformation project across the county involving all the different constituencies that live within the community. Energy's a part of that, like what we're talking about here right now, looking at infrastructure, looking at the water, looking at fire resiliency and various other issues. It's an opportunity for this community to lead and not follow, much like what we're talking about here with the Train group, to understand the value within the community and within the people, and to transform the relationship with the different constituencies and the different bodies across the county, such as what we're talking about here with these community microgrids. It'd be an opportunity to look at who are we in this place? How do we support our people? How do we make sure that we don't have three-hour commutes to find a job? That salaries are too low, so we're unable to hire fire or police officers or others that are needed to improve life within the community? How to deal with a polluted lake that's struggling in its existence right now? Or how to deal with forestry after 97% of Mendocino was burnt to the ground? We can forward to the group and we can have a conversation with Carol on, offline separately in regards to this, with the idea of developing essentially a resolution, much like what the Train group put here today. And then an MOU that would be signed off by the four different parties, which would be the first of its kind ever done in the United States. This would allow us to lead and not follow. It would allow us to focus on what Vision 2028 could and should be, and to look at the importance of leapfrogging other communities as we try to transform life in Lake County, rather than looking at others with envy, realizing that this community can lead. So what we're asking is for the community to consider signing off on an MOU and a resolution on a grant that would be over a million dollars tied in.
I'm going, I'm going to interrupt at this moment in time, and I appreciate your comment and your participation in this, but you, you seem to be making a sales pitch for us to create an MOU. I, I don't think that that conversation is out of context entirely, but I think that conversation needs to begin, as you stated, reaching out maybe to our CAO and then seeing where it goes from there. But I don't know that the comment is in relation specifically to what we are looking at today, which is the approval of the letter and agreement. And again, I do appreciate your participation and, and look forward to hearing what your further conversations are like.
Thank you, and I, I appreciate the comments of the group and I wish the Train folks all the best in this. Sounds like a great project and opportunities. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you. And with that, I see no further hands up, either in the boardroom or in the Zoom room. So bringing it back to the board, unless there's further deliberation, I believe we're looking for action.
Offering the resolution as amended.
Which chair, I'd like to offer the resolution as amended.
Resolution's been offered by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Randall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
And Matthew, I want to make sure the amended resolution has been sent to Johanna as a PDF.
Yes, it has been sent, and so if, if Ms. Grant and Chairman Sabatier can watch their email, it will be forwarded soon, because obviously the grant deadline is today.
Thank you, man.
I will look for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you to everyone again for being part of this item.
Thank you.
So I believe that does it for our public session today. And so we're going to move on to the remainder of our closed session items. 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation, title, Public Works Director. 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation, title, Behavioral Health Director. And then 8.4, Conference with Temporary Representatives Designated to Meet with County Department Heads Regarding Salary and Benefits of Unrepresented Management Employees. And with that, thank you again for joining us, we will reconvene to closed session.